All right, we're gonna, in just a moment, stand for a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. I just wanted to make an announcement, just, keep your seat for just a second, just a bit of sad news. One of our pretty new employees in the tax and automobile office, Deanne Stainbacher, lost her husband in an automobile accident yesterday on Harsh Bluff Road, Craig Stainbacher. Deanne's worked in various places, Guaranty Bank, and Hess Furniture, and most recently for the county. So, keep Deanne in your prayers, if you would, please. Let's stand and have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for a new day, and we thank you for this meeting time. We appreciate the opportunity to work for the citizens of this county in conjunction with our employees and taxpayers, and input and interaction between each other. We just turn this agenda over to you. We've got several important items, and we just pray for wisdom that we need to make the best decision on behalf of this county. We pray for Deanne, and for her family, and this tragic loss, and ask for your supernatural comfort for her. We pray for our first responders, we pray for our servicemen and women serving all over the globe, we just ask for their safe return, we ask for daily safety for our firemen, policemen, for those that work at the sheriff's office, just keep them safe in the difficult jobs that they do and the way that they serve us. We just acknowledge you, Lord, as King of kings and Lord of lords, and turn this meeting now over to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to our meeting. This is, we've had quite a few meetings this month, this will be our last one for the month of September. Today's the 23rd September, 2019, just after 9:00 a.m. Our first order of business, item number one, is opportunity for public comments and/or requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with our Open Meetings Act. Anyone like to address the court at this time? All right, we'll move on. We have three sets of minutes we're going to approve individually. The first, item number two, consider possibly approved minutes from our September 10th meeting. That was our first meeting of the month, it was on a Tuesday, that was our, what I would call our regular meeting of the Commissioners Court.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Commissioner Fitch, Second Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number three, consider and possibly approved minutes from September 12th, that was a public hearing on our proposed tax rate, that was in the evening on Thursday, the 12th.
Make a motion, we approve.
Motion is made to approve that set of minutes, Commissioner Parker?
Second.
Second Commissioner Fitch, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And lastly, item number four, consider possibly approved minutes from our September 16th meeting, that was last week. We had a public hearing on tax rate and budget, and we also had a couple of items there related to elections and related to health insurance.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Fitch?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number five is our report from Commissioners regarding what's going on in roadwork. I'll start this time on my left, Precinct 4, Commissioner Parker?
We finished up our little bit we lacked on 3155 last Monday, and put a primer coat on it, and then Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we went to Precinct 3 to help Dana with some seal coat. So, had a busy week last week, everybody worked good together, and it was, it was good.
New distributor truck worked well?
It did, we had one little...
Trailer?
One little glitch with it, and I think they got it fixed Friday. The spray bar wouldn't shut off, and it wouldn't come back on, and they finally messed with it enough that they got it back on, finished it up. So, they are going to, I mean, everything should be ready to go. I think we're gonna go to Al's Precinct tomorrow and work with him, so.
All right, thank you. Precinct 3?
Well, we chip sealed a little over six miles, 1820, 3920, 3350, 3260, and 1910, around about six miles.
Got six miles done?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. In two days?
About, well, it took us two and a half.
Good, yeah.
But I appreciate everybody helping.
All right, so that was a all hands on deck, everybody participated in that?
Everybody could be there, yes, they could be there.
How long can you, how long you have to wait before you can drive on that after?
Just right after. You just put the rock on it and drive, just pack it and be right on it.
All right, six miles, good job. Precinct 2?
We've been mowing, I have about, probably one day left on mowing, and water pump went out on tractor one day last week, so we should have that water pump fixed today. So, we'll be back and finish up our mowing this week. We scabbed some resurfacing on 1150, and plan on going back over there and doing some more resurface over some places I've done bowmagged, and so that'll, that'll work out good through the winter time. On 2670, we bowmagged, dug up and reclaimed a pretty good little spot there and packed it back, gonna try to cover that up and seal that over. And then we went to a training one day on that 3155, sent two guys out there to check out that training when they were putting in that, mixing in that road for Jimmy Parker in Precinct 4. And did some patching one day, and we chip sealed in Precinct 3 for three days, two and a half days, and we went and covered up and surfaced over three culverts on 2325, getting that road ready to chip seal. And then, one of our oil trucks went down in Precinct 1, so I took, I had an oil truck, we use it just mainly for water, it'd been converted with some weld-on attachments and some stuff had been taken off the tank on it for just water only. We found the, all our pieces and our, the lid that went on top of the truck and everything, and we converted that back to oil truck slash water truck, so now we still have two oil trucks for hauling the emulsion for chip sealing. We got that finished up on Friday. Then, Thursday night, we had a tree, a big oak tree, fell out on 1230, getting that all cleaned up this morning, got that out of the road, and then Saturday night, went out to blodge it on 2850, another big oak tree fell, just happened to fall my way, so we got that all cleared out Saturday night. And this week, we'll be putting in a culvert this morning and clearing up those trees, and every minute we can get away, we're getting some roads ready for chip sealing in the next week or so, and I probably got about seven or eight miles right now, we're lined up to chip seal, and we have several smaller little roads and places we're gonna try to chip seal, so I hope I can get it on up to about the 10-mile mark is my goal. And we're gonna help Precinct 1 do, start chip sealing tomorrow morning. It's working out good, the distributor truck works really well, it's really a good benefit, is what I got.
All right, thank you. Precinct 1?
Well, tomorrow, we're gonna start chip sealing, we have almost five miles, and I think we can do it with our new equipment, hopefully in one day, or it's possible if we don't have a breakdown. And other than that, we've been preparing for that and waiting, and we, I guess they all know, I think I've talked to Jimmy and everybody else. We're going to do it a little different this time, that oil truck out, we spend most of our time waiting on an oil truck to bring us our emulsion, and they can, we can hire a 6,000 gallon tanker, an Ergon, to bring it out for $900. Hopefully, that'd be a lot faster, and with oil trucks down, we could've got through, had we had oil, Dana could've got through in a day and a half, if we'd had the oil.
So, when you run out of oil, then you gotta stop everything, run to town, fill up, come back?
We had those two smaller trucks shuttling, and one of our, one of them got a hole in it the last day, in the tank, it's an old, old tank, probably comes from Talco. So, that was a, that was a real, it was really sad to see all that equipment and men sitting around for waiting on oil. It happened, well, all three days with Dana, I mean, it wasn't Dana's fault, it's just our, we weren't prepared.
Now, $900 Ergon will be there and keep you supplied, just keep on going.
Yeah, get two gallons at a time.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And hopefully tonight, John will go get that, our truck with the heater filled up this afternoon, I have the PO, so we start with him in the morning at 7:00, and then the truck will be there, and we'll see, it shouldn't really speed it up, but it'll be the first time, we're learning.
Good idea. Anything else? All right, thank you for that, I hope you have a productive day tomorrow. All right, item number six, time to do what we do every year at this time, adopt a new budget for the coming year, 2019 and '20 fiscal year. We'll talk about and adopt the budget first, and then we'll move forward to the tax rate. So, we have had hearings, you've had lots of discussion, what would you like to do?
I'd make a motion, we adopt the 2019, '20, '20 budget.
Okay.
I would like to make some...
We will, we got a motion on the floor to adopt the budget by Commissioner Parker, comments, Commissioner Riddle?
Oh, wait on me?
Yeah.
First thing, I want the public to know, we're not lowering our taxes, and I understand that a lot of the Commissioners may be telling me we are, we are actually, because of our property values went up so much, our rate is lower, but our amount of dollars we collect will be even greater than last year because of the property value increase in the property. So, it's not, I don't wanna see, be taking credit for reducing your taxes when we actually are going to increase them, a slight amount though, thank you. And then, I have, there's a lot of things in the budget that I don't understand, and I think that we need to, I could point them out, for instance, the county agent, a county agent in Texas, according to the, makes $172,500 or something a year. We pay our county agent, we give them a supplement on their pay of $21,600. Then, we give them $13,000 auto allowance, unaccountable, that's just extra salary, we take out Medicare and Social Security, the reason they don't have to account for their mileage. And then, we furnish a secretary, that's over $40,000, state employees, we don't know whether they come to work or they don't come to work. We have the DPS, we furnish a secretary for the DPS, pay her nearly $40,000, we don't even know what she does, she works for them, we don't know whether she comes to work or don't come to work, we don't have a clue, but we pay that kind, we just spend that money, I don't know why we do it. It's, we have in our budget, I don't understand having $300,000 contingencies in the budget, I can't, I can't understand, I mean, the budget allows us, if we have an emergency, to declare an emergency, the Commissioners and take money from other sources to pay for something. So, I realize a contingency in case we need it, but that said, I don't understand that having, I don't understand that our maintenance, the way we started budgeting, our maintenance department is just really unique, I guess, I'm not sure that I understand it. I would say they talked about on the news, fake budget, the fake news, it's kinda fake budget, how we charge off and charge so many hours to this or that, the other, and we all have it in our budget precinct, each precinct for maintenance, but yet, we have another maintenance budget, another huge maintenance, and this last year, since 2017, that budget has increased this year by $110,000, and then increased $12,000 more than last year, I don't know what that's for, but the way they keep records and they spend, you know, for instance, we send all, each precinct has their own budget for maintenance, and we're charged for maintenance as we do it, and up until now, we've had control over that maintenance, but now, we're starting to build a, build a entity, we've created an entity, and some has to do with putting these hours on cost and so forth, but anyway, we always will have to send out work. Today, to work on your car, you gotta have a computer, so we, we'll always have to send it out. For instance, last week, we had a water truck in Longview, we had one of the 18-wheeler in Lone Star getting some work done, and these cars and modern equipment, and it won't be long that we'll be asking for equipment, and I'll tell you, these Commissioners are letting this happen, and I think we should be very cautious of what we're doing in that maintenance department. Today, our motor grader's got tires, we have to send it out, we don't have it, we don't have, and we can't buy the computers to work on this stuff, and we shouldn't buy it, and we, then we'll have to hire mechanics to do it. So, it's, it's a way to build up an entity, it'll have its own thing, it's went from about 127,000, 130,000 to 218, this year, 238. Why? We have the highest paid employees in the shop, and they spend over half their time in the office with paperwork, and it's just amazing, and we pay Outfit $400 a month, and paid about $7,000 to get on this program, sign a contract for three years, and it's nothing more than just writing down what they did to a piece of equipment, or setting in the office, put it in the computer, is what they actually do. And it, this group, I think of Commissioners are to take seriously what we're, what we're committing to, because they're an extension of every precinct, we're responsible for our maintenance of our equipment and taking care of it, and try to turn that over to some other department, I can, you know, I can see it, well, the maintenance department's got our truck, we can't fix this one, we can't do this, the maintenance department, it's not that way. My drivers, his, his men, were taking that water truck attachment off to make sure we had an oil truck Friday, and that's, that's a daily thing, we've got somebody in the shop, all of us do, and so, to try to turn it over to that responsibility, and that's why they want to only report to one person, they can't report to one person. Actually, they can get their timesheet signed, but they can't do their work, our men do the, our roadhands, in the winter time, we do all the PMs, we do the oil change and maintenance and stuff, so we've created, and then with our budget, I'm not understanding how we got, it's a fake budget, we've turned a fox over to the hen house, did I say that right? But anyway, how many hours they want to charge, they put down their hours and get paid by the sheriff or whatever, how many hours they put down there, how long's it take them? Some cases, our men, our roadhands have done the work, we should, we should have a better system than that for budgeting, that's not, I don't know how we come up with it, I think that Roger Ledbetter, the unit manager, he didn't want anything to do with the shop, he wanted to turn that over to somebody else, and I think it would be a waste of the taxpayers' money, and I hope that we, I hope that we will try to do something about it, I don't know what the increase this year for. But I don't think the Commissioners are relieved, should be relieved of their responsibility to take care of their own equipment, to get the job done. And like I said, each precinct now has, has, we got in our budgets for maintenance, we already get, and they charge it all to us. For instance, we got the reclaiming machine, we got it in, it was, they made keys for it, $200 and some thousand dollars, and I asked the guy at the shop, why you charge this Precinct 1? Oh, well, we'll change it to another, we'll charge the next one to another precinct. This is not, this is not budgeting, this is not keeping books or running a place right, and as long as they have that freedom to put down hours, how do we know it takes one hour to change oil, or does it take 10 hours? We don't know, they can put it down, anything they want, it's a terrible system we have, and we as responsible to the taxpayers are responsible to let them, let us build in this system, and I think we should reconsider what we're doing with all that paperwork and so forth. And the budget has, we have the fire department, we have $305,000 for an extra truck for the fire department, city of fire department. The city's budget for the fire department is about $3.1 million, we're paying them, and I should give this out, we've had a 10-year contract, we paid about 300, at, two years ago, three years ago now, $390,000, a little less than $400,000. Then, the volunteer firemen said they couldn't get firemen, and so we, the county gave them a, during the daytime, most volunteer firemen are working during the day, and so at middle of the day, it's hard for them to get to a fire, so the county, we pointed up, they said it'd take three men for a shift, $60,000 a piece, so we put, the county gave them $180,000, added to that $390,000. And then, two years ago, they come back again and wanted $500,000, they started off with, more money from us. This year, we finally agreed, the court agreed to give them more money, which totaled $841,000, that we give the city to help our volunteer firemen. Now, now they want us to pay half of a truck for $305,000. In 2014, we bought another truck, used to, they had one big truck, and then we bought another truck for the other fire station, and we paid half of that in 2014. Now, they want another big truck for blocking out on the highways, I understand what they're saying, it might have, be better to have a big truck if they have a wreck on the interstate, but my gosh, Dallas, if you had a truck to block a big truck every wreck they had, you'd be in deep trouble. So, I think that, I think for the county to pony up money for the city fire department, I think we've given enough, and I think, I don't know where the stopping line is, and I don't know where it is. This is not about the fire department, and I know that they all get excited and mad at me when I say something, I think we have a great fire department, I think we should, we should be proud of it, and I think we have a great volunteer fire department, and I think, I think they're, but they got the limit, this is who pay, who's paying the bills? Is it the county employees, is it county taxpayers? Why should it be the county taxpayers? Why would we want up on them? The city can just spend their money any way they want to and take more from the county, that's the way I see it. And I just, there's many, many other ways that I think we could save money and should try to save money, and I just, that's all I've got to say.
All right, got a motion on the floor?
I second the motion.
Commissioner Fitch seconds the motion, which is to adopt the 2019 and '20 budget. I'll call for the vote, all in favor of approval of the 2019 and '20 budget, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I oppose.
Okay. Motion passes three to two. We'll continue on to item number seven, and that is to adopt the 2019 tax rate of 47.42 cents. Again, as Commissioner Riddle has pointed out, this is the, this is a lower rate than last year, but because of increased property values, this is the effective rate, or the rate that brings in the same amount from the prior year with a few adjustments for new properties added. 47.42 is our tax rate for your consideration and approval.
Make a motion, we accept the tax rate?
Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch to adopt the 2019 tax rate of 47.42 cents per hundred dollars of taxable value.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
So, did I hear a, did I hear three Commissioners vote yes and one no? Okay, so make that a four to one vote with Commissioner Riddle voting nay. All right, thank you, gentlemen, for your time on this budget and tax rate this year. Moving along to some more discussion about fire departments, item number eight, consider and possibly approve allowing the Argo Volunteer Fire Department to use the full allocated $35,000 for the purchase of a new truck, which exceeds the actual purchase price of $33,000, the excess to be used towards equipment for setting that new truck up. And Mike, I think my figures may be off a few cents in there, but we're at about $33,000 on your actual purchase price, and what Chief Logan is asking, if we have got budgeted $35,000 for the purchase of that new truck for Argo, he has managed to find one for less than that by a couple of thousand dollars, and he is asking, may I still have the allocated and budgeted $35,000 and use whatever excess over the actual purchase price towards the costs for that skid unit, lights, sirens, and other related equipment, decals on the truck, et cetera? We're gonna follow this up with a request for some additional money in the form of a loan to fully equip that, so that, it's not like that $2,000 is gonna take care of all the equipment that will need to be on that truck, he wants to take out a loan with this as well, but first, we need to consider whether or not you want to allow him to have that full budgeted amount.
With them just getting started, I think that they could need, need the money to...
Why don't you kinda explain that statement there, I think that's important.
Okay, the, Argo just has started up back, when was it, Mike? October of last year, and they're still trying to get everything going, they've been using some of Koppel's stuff and, and all, and I feel like that this is one way that we can help them get their department up and running, so I think we should let them, let them use that other 2,000 there for, for their, you know, some of their equipment that they need to put on the truck, some stuff they need to do.
That's your motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, motion by Commissioner Parker in favor of allowing the full allocation.
It's actually 36, now, budgeted there.
We had budgeted 36,000?
Yes.
Okay.
We never know what those numbers are actually on run, so we... If you're willing, you can either make a motion, let it use up to 35 or 36, or maybe not keep one in between there.
Mike, the other, that other $1,000, I mean...
No, it's actually 36.
It's 36, so...
Okay, for those of you listening that couldn't hear that, Chief Logan is saying that the actual cost to equip this truck will exceed the differential in this 35 and 33, and it will even exceed the $20,000 loan that's in item number nine. So, we, do you wanna, you wanna hold that at 35,000, do you wanna allow them to draw the full 36,000 that's actually in the budget?
I think we ought to let them have the 36.
Okay. Motion is amended by Commissioner Parker to... Motion is amended by Commissioner Parker to allow Argo to use the full thirty-six thousand dollars that is budgeted.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Moving on to item number, that's a unanimous vote, item number nine, consider and possibly approve a loan to Argo Volunteer Fire Department, twenty thousand dollars, so that they can apply this money toward the purchase of a skid unit, lights, sirens, decals, other equipment for this new truck. And we have done this before with other departments and made them a, a, a no-interest loan. And what have we done in the past, four years? You know, Mike, that's going to put you at, you know, needing to pay back about twelve thousand dollars a year, a thousand dollars a month. Can you handle that kind of cash flow?
If you did twenty thousand for four years, it's not...
I'm sorry, I'm sitting here thinking about forty-eight thousand. I've got forty-eight on the brain. Let's revise that down. Twenty thousand into forty-eight months, four hundred a month. Ms. Collier, were you thinking something different?
No.
I'm not putting you on the spot, were you, does that sound...
I was just thinking, you know, if you give me a response, we can, we can...
Do you think you can handle that? I mean, that's just what we've done in the past, is four years.
What will happen to any of that?
No, I'm, I'm asking you, I don't, I want you to be able to, I don't want to start off on the wrong foot. If we need to talk about something different, let's talk about it now. We don't want to repossess your truck.
Oh.
Okay. Twenty thousand dollars over four years.
Make that motion.
When's the next time they'll get a truck? Is it about a five-year cycle now?
Five or six.
I believe we've got six departments.
We've got, we've just got five now. Since Winfield closed down, we've got five.
I don't have no problem. If we go five years, they'd bring it down a hundred dollars a month, be three thirty-three something like that.
We do, we do have six. We had seven until Winfield closed down. That's right.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we approve the amount, and let's let them run the math, and maybe come back in a couple of weeks and approve the term? How about that?
If we want to do, um, consider four years, we're done?
Yeah. Or do you want some time? If we approve the loan, so that you know you've got the money coming, do you want to put the pencil to it? Do you want to go ahead and say five years?
If we start, we go for five.
Okay, we have a deal. I had a motion made by Commissioner Applewhite, and I think Commissioner Fitch seconded that. Are you okay with a five-year payback term? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Item number ten, this is a big-ticket item that Commissioner Riddle has mentioned, and that is to consider and possibly approve participating with the city of Mount Pleasant to purchase a fire engine at a cost of three hundred and five thousand dollars for the county's half. And just a little bit more background on this, that will be a purchase that we approve possibly now, but that truck will take a while to complete, six months minimum, I would say. And part of that purchase would include the purchase from the vendor, but there's also some add-on equipment that we, would be purchased separately rather than a turnkey from the vendor, because Chief McCray says that they can get a better deal if they purchase that equipment from different vendors individually. So it will be a combination of the actual cost of the finished truck plus some add-on items there. And this is the second time that we have considered doing this, rather than alternating years, as has been done in the past, where the city would make a purchase of a, of an engine, and then the county made a purchase of an engine. The last time we purchased a truck, we decided to just split the cost fifty-fifty with the city, and that's what we are proposing here. The city of Mount Pleasant has approved this at council to do this, and the commitment would be made contractually to purchase this rather soon, so they are, the sooner they can get it ordered, the sooner they can get the truck. This is a substantial cost, obviously, for a six hundred and ten thousand dollar piece of equipment. It is a piece of equipment that Chief McCray says is necessary to keep their fleet current. They are retiring the oldest truck, and it would be used for traffic control, as Chief McCray has mentioned in the past. And that's not the truck that we bought just a few years ago. That would be one, Chief, do you know how, how old that truck is?
Two thousand and three.
A two thousand and three model, so a sixteen-year-old truck is the one that would be not quite retired, but, but retired for the typical purpose of an engine. And that would give a total of relatively new engines. That would make two with this new truck. Is that right? So, again, this is a budget, this is a budgeted item, but not approved yet.
I believe, if I understood it right, Chief McCray said this truck will be fully rigged out.
It, it will be, it will be, but the point I was making, and he was in my office just the other day, to make sure that we understood, and we don't know exactly how we'll write the checks if you approve this, but there would, but part of this cost includes, part of this, this cost right here includes purchases from third-party vendors that are not part of the turnkey contracted price. And again, for example, if they bought a X item for that truck and included it in the purchase price, it would cost more than if they said, "No, just leave that off, and we'll go purchase our own and add it on there." So there may be multiple checks written by the city rather than just one, and then we'll work it out with the city manager and Chief McCray as to how the, the county would, would submit their dollars.
Make a motion, we buy the truck.
Motion is made for approval of this purchase, three hundred and five thousand dollars for the county's half of a new engine for the fire department.
Brian, I'd like to clarify something, too, that, and you kind of mentioned, mentioned it there, this truck will not be used for blocking on the interstate. The old truck that they were retiring is the one that, that they will use. A lot of the departments, area-wide, statewide, whatever, have started using their old, instead of selling their old truck like that, they're using it to block because they, they have saved numerous firefighters and EMS and police officers' lives by doing that. They can turn that truck sideways behind the, the accident scene, and it, it helps to, to, just to block. And it will, this new one will not be the one used to be blocking the interstate or anything. It will be the one that, that they're retiring that will be used for that.
Well, that is the way Chief McCray presented it, rather than selling or trading in that, that oldest two thousand and three truck, they felt that for what they could get for it, it would be better used, just as you've said.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is seconded by Commissioner Parker. All in favor of the purchase of new engine, along with the city, our half being three hundred and five thousand dollars, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you all. All right. Motion passes with one nay. Item number eleven, consider and possibly approve payment of a pauper's funeral in the amount of nine hundred and fifty dollars to J.C. White Funeral and Cremation Services. I do feel that it's important, and J.C. came to talk to me about this the other day. I do think you all ought to know that there was a service performed by J.C.'s funeral home for this family. The deceased Jimmy Williams, the applicant here was Brenda Williams. So, again, this is not our typical situation on a pauper's funeral, where we have typically no family available, and we have a, a body that literally needs to be buried. Here, there was an actual service performed. Family has no money, for those of you that know the Williams family, and I don't. I understand that there really is no money available here. But nonetheless, Mr. White is asking us to effectively reimburse him for services that he provided that he will not be paid for, probably in excess of what the county would allocate for this.
So he didn't get paid for his services either? He just donated?
I'm going to, I ask him to sign a pauper's funeral verification statement, which J.C. has done, dated the 10th of September. J.C. White Funeral Homes has not received any form of compensation for the funeral services of Jimmy Williams.
That sounds like something he would do. He's a good guy.
If any form of compensation is received, we will notify the county judge. So the answer to your question is yes, the service that was performed was probably in excess of the typical nine hundred and fifty dollars that we often approve because there was a minimal service, minimal service that was provided in this case, rather than just a cremation.
I'll make a motion, we pay for it.
Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch to approve payment to J.C. White for this funeral. Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to vote nay, just maintain our policy that we have established. Motion passes. All right. Let's see, we, it's a quarter to ten here, and I have told Chris Kaplinger and Tony that we would probably start with them about 10 o'clock, so let's see if we can handle some other orders of business. And Santos, I see you there waiting patiently for us to give these ladies an opportunity to get here. Let's move on to other items, and hopefully, we can time this to arrive at 10 o'clock along with them. Let's start with item fourteen, approve oral and written reports.
The one thing to note on there, Judge, is if you look at like the transfer column, CDs are mature, we're doing those CDs, that's what that number is.
You kept those with guaranty buying, right?
The general fund is five million dollar CD. On the next page, the District Attorney's Drug Corrupture Fund was a hundred thousand they want to renew in the finance bonds. We already have one CD for three million, six eighty. We rolled that money over from the construction fund, so we're doing another CD for two million dollars, so we'll have a total of five million, six eighty CDs there. And then down the roadway bond, three and a half million dollars of CDs.
What'd you tell me the rate was going to be?
Two one five.
Two point fifteen.
We checked that, it's text pool, to the difference. They want guaranties paid. Two four one five. They're not paying two four one five, they're not. They're paying two four one five.
And Carl and I did discuss that. We compared it to the text pool rate, which changes on a, on a daily basis. Felt like keeping the money local was not only a little bit cheaper, but it enabled us to keep the money local. Now, maybe next time, we'll go back with text pool, but this time...
It's almost six months, three weeks, so we can check.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number fourteen is, excuse me, fifteen, is consider and possibly approve our treasurer's
Make a motion, we approve it.
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. If y'all will give me your signatures on that, pass it back. Item number sixteen, approve budget amendments.
We don't have any, Judge.
No budget amendments today. Item number seventeen, sign pay orders and approve payment of bills.
Make a motion, we pay our bills.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll, I don't know who's going to leave and who's not. Let's go ahead and, yeah, we can go ahead and have closing comments now, just in case anybody's planning on leaving. Let me tell you what we're going to do here in these last minutes of the meeting. We've got a couple of agenda items, and these are pretty important, pretty serious items. It affects the county's health insurance, and that will be item number twelve and item number thirteen. Item number twelve has to do with renewal of our current stop-loss insurance related to our self-funded insurance. And item number thirteen is to discuss a quote that we have received from Texas Association of Counties, which would be a switch to fully funded insurance and, and not a self-funded plan. So this will take some discussion. You're welcome and encouraged to stay if you would like, but in the event that you are not interested in that, closing comments, I'll go ahead and begin. Today is the last meeting for a couple of our folks here, and want to acknowledge, first of all, Carl Johnson, our county auditor, who has been here longer than probably anybody else in this room. And Carl moves on to, moves on to a slower pace in his life, as he's, he's gotten quite a bit older and needs to slow down some. So Carl, I want to say that, at least for me, you've certainly helped make my job easier in the time you spent here, and navigated this county through many, many years, twenty-plus years, and you've kept us in the black, you've kept us with a strong fund balance, and that, that happens with daily decision-making, and I appreciate the guidance you've provided for me. Carolyn and her husband, Skippy, who is a pastor here in town, will be moving way far away to Ypsilanti, Michigan. And she's told me about it. It sounds like a fantastic opportunity for her. And while I can cry and moan about losing a great, a great assistant, if somebody's going to go on to a better opportunity, then I'm all for it, and I will applaud them and hug her and send her on her way and tell her to pack warmly, 'cause it will be cold up there. That's just outside of Ann Arbor, so this is her last week. This Friday, we will have a celebration at Laura's on Wednesday, two days from now, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. And we will say thanks and shake hands and give hugs to Carl and Carolyn. So, you're invited and encouraged to come and share that with your employees and let them know. But this is, this is certainly big, certainly for Carl and, and for Carolyn, who's been with us, she's been with me eight and a half years, and you were with the clerk for how long before that? Two and a half years. So, these are some long-term, great, great employees. And filling Carolyn's role will be Mr. James Webster. James has been our employee for a number of years, serving in the Justice of the Peace Office. And when the opportunity came up after William White retired, James moved into our position as business manager. And it was a bit of a difficult thing a couple of weeks, well, three weeks ago, when I had to inform James that the office of the business manager had been eliminated from the county budget. And at that time, I didn't know about Carolyn. So, it is a win-win, I think, certainly for me and I believe for James. For James to transition into a new role, that being my assistant, and we're glad to be able to save the job of a county employee. And I know that James will bring a wealth of experience and knowledge along with him when he comes to my office, and I will teach him some new things as well. So, two folks to congratulate and say goodbye to, and then you'll see James in the days ahead and congratulate him. So, I think that that's all I've got. Commissioners, I'll start with Commissioner Riddle today. Any closing comments?
Nothing.
Commissioner Fitch?
I'm good.
All right.
Thank you for your services, which we enjoyed as long as I've been here, and I appreciate it. Miss you dearly, not you, Carl.
You miss him, but not dearly.
No, not really. I miss Carolyn more. She's around here later.
All I wanna say is I appreciate y'all, what y'all doing. Both of you've helped me tremendously the five years that I've been in office, and I do appreciate it. Wish you both the best.
I'd like to say one thing. I've been here since 1992. I wanna thank all of y'all for helping me do my job, working with me, and all the judges and commissioners that came before you that I worked with. I'm thankful to keep doing this job with people I'm living with together, do things together. I love the county, good shape, proud way of waving it. Paul, I'm gonna take off. You say it. I'm not retiring. I'm just retiring from this job.
All right. Okay, well, it's just a couple of minutes before 10. Tell you what we're gonna do. We're gonna recess for five minutes. Anybody that doesn't wanna stick around for insurance, this is your opportunity, although this is important information, and again, I encourage you to, to do that. So, let's take a restroom break and literally start back in five minutes from right now. Well, I, I can go ahead and get started. Thank you for your patience. Let's get back to business, and we're gonna jump back now to item number 12. And this is to consider and possibly approve stop-loss insurance renewal for 2020. We have with us Chris Kaplinger from UMR. And this would be, again, something that we do each year. We have to approve a carrier and a premium to buy the necessary stop-loss insurance that goes along with a self-funded plan. This is what keeps us from being devastated by one or more high claims since we are self-funded, and the claims are paid for actually by the county. We allocate money for each employee from each department into a pot of money, as it were, and all of our claims are paid out of that pot of money. But again, so that we are not devastated by a million-dollar claim, we have stop-loss insurance, which covers these high claimants that can, you know, range from one to five of these a year, might dip into our stop-loss insurance. So, we, we will hold off on a vote on this item until we have talked, discussed both of these items, number 12 and 13, because stop-loss insurance would not be required if you were to consider going with the TAC pool. And so, we'll, but I wanted to give Chris the opportunity to present this. You all have heard this conversation before. Chris, we'll welcome you up to the mic, or we'll hand you a microphone, whatever you like, to talk to us about how does our stop-loss insurance look for this upcoming year.
Well, thank you very much for having me today. I do appreciate it. I've got some handouts for you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, what I have, can you hear me okay? So, what I have with me today that I have presented to you all is an extension from our July meeting. I went back and we put together our renewal for the UMR. So, the, the spiral binder contains your UMR renewal and also your stop-loss renewal from QBE. And then I've got some additional supporting documentation to explain both how we came to those renewals and then wanted to refresh your memory on some programs we talked about in July to put in place for 1-1. You'll start on the spiral binder under the renewal services page. Your current fees are outlined at, on the first column. And actually, you know, what your fee is, admin fee that you're paying after you remove or take into account the rebate fee credit, your admin fees are, I apologize. I think it, I believe it comes down to $14, a little over $14 on a per employee, per month basis. And as you can see, for January of 2020, these rates will all stay the same for all the components that you have, which is UMR processing your medical claims. You are getting a rebate fee credit off the medical admin fee of $30, $31.75. We have our care management programs. We have our Cobra administration. You, and there is one recommendation that I would like to make, is that if you come down to right under case management, you see that there's a 53 cent PPM for Nurse Line. Nurse Line has a lot of added value to it. However, you have Teladoc, so I feel like you're paying for two services that kinda overlap with each other. Nurse Line, you're not able to, they're not able to provide prescriptions like Teladoc does. So, this would be an added savings to the plan by removing that 53 cents PPM. Teladoc is the same concept. It's available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, even holidays. It allows you to call in and talk to a doctor. Nurse Line, you're not speaking to a doctor. You're actually speaking to a registered nurse. But a doctor under Teladoc can offer and issue a prescription for you. Now, the prescriptions are generic, but they're able to give you a prescription, and they treat you for more cases than what Nurse Line does. We're also offering a renewal fee guarantee for 2021 and 2022. We extended our wellness credit to $5,000 each year. So, this $5,000 has helped offset the cost for the biometric screenings and the CHRA that was put in place this year. We'll extend that $5,000. If you're interested in looking at, from the results of the screenings and the biometrics, if you're interested in putting in a disease management program, we can offset that cost with the $5,000 wellness credit. You have Real Appeal also, which is a claims-only program, and we'll extend that again for 2020 for your members who want to engage in Real Appeal or stay in, involved in Real Appeal program. Any questions? As a reminder, while I was here last month, or in July, we talked about the CRS Benchmark Program. And if you'll look down currently here, I'm still on the renewal services section, where it says Cost Reduction Savings Program with Large Bill Review. What the Benchmark Program would do in replacing this is it would lower the access fee from 30% of all savings achieved to 22% of savings achieved. It works with just one out-of-network provider to establish aggressive discounts, and an average of 55% on all out-of-network claims. If that provider is not willing to accept that discount, that's where we go into our next layer, which would be another provider vendor that is owned by United Healthcare, who would then negotiate those rates even lower than 55%. We have gotten about 98% participation of these providers when these claims are paid by our, our main out-of-network provider called Multiplan. And so, it's been very, very successful. We're averaging 55% discounts. The program rolled out in May, so we don't have, you know, a lot of data yet, but the discounts have not dipped below 55%. And this is not just out-of-network claims. You have very, very low utilization out of network, but it is just an added value to protect the plan.
Chris, can you call in to the question?
Yes.
On the drug rebate, can you explain how that gets accepted?
It's accepted, though, if you're, if you're sending it.
Yes.
Okay, so we're paying you for that, not for the income?
Correct. Yes.
It's $6.75?
Yes.
Or $14, probably.
Yeah.
You might just wanna explain that to.
Okay. So, what Carl was asking is, on that $38.01 on your medical claims, UMR reduces that $38.01 by $31.75 each month before we bill the county for their invoice. So, that's where I'm getting total, what is the total?
$14.
Yeah. It's $14. My apologies that I don't have that exact amount, but, so, you're not paying the 31, $38.01. You're actually paying $38.01 minus $31.75, and then those additional fees listed below.
How long have we gotten that premium credit?
You put in the premium PDL on 1-119. Prior to that, you had a premium credit on a lower amount for the last two years prior to that. What also was added, 1-119, is in addition to this rebate credit that you're getting off the admin fees, that you're also gonna be receiving rebates on prescription drugs, you know, any brand prescriptions that are done at retail and mail order, and any specialty prescriptions that are purchased, which at this time, you don't have any specialty prescriptions being bought, but you're getting some rebates. The first check for the rebates should be coming out in mid-October. And that was based off of, if you'll turn to the premium PDL page, so it's two pages back behind the renewal services, you will see that your rebates on those claims are at $22 per, and I'm midway down the page where it says rebate share, rebate fee credit elected. So, in addition to the $31.75, you're going to receive checks from OptumRx for a retail 30, any brand prescriptions that are purchased at $22 per prescription. You don't have the retail 90, so that doesn't apply. And then any, the next one down is any home delivery, so you do have very good utilization in mail order. So, prescription, brand prescriptions that are done via mail order, you'll get a 50 cent, $67 rebate for each brand prescription. And then if there were any specialty prescriptions that were purchased, there would be $127 rebate on those prescriptions. And that will stay in place again for 2020. And each year, we expect those rebates to increase, so the county would receive more Any questions on the UMR renewal? All right. If you...
Would you hand Tony a mic? I wanna get this on the record.
One of the things I was just, okay, one of the things I was just noticing here, we had discussed at one point, if you do stay with UMR and move in the Cobra Administration to Higginbotham, which would reduce this cost in half. So, it's 75 cents per head instead of the $1.12. And if they're utilizing the online benefit tool, it's just a one-stop, there's no, there's not a separate filing for Cobra. It's just done through the benefits and hands system. So, that's one thing I just wanted to mention, that would move away from UHC, UMR, if that's something that you'd wanted to do, which would save you a little bit more money.
In addition to the UMR services, when we talked in July, you all gave the opportunity for me to quote the other ancillary services outside of what UMR administers. We do the medical, and we administer the dental. We quoted on your voluntary vision and your life and voluntary life, and our quotes came back greater than the rates that you currently have in place. So, for the vision, we're exceeding the vision rates, I believe, 20% below the current rates, our quote was. And also, our, our life is matching the current basic life rates that the county pays, but our rates that the employees can elect to additional supplemental life insurance for themselves and their family, those rates were slightly below the current rates.
Thank you. The ancillary services you presented last night?
Okay. My apologies that I don't have those quotes with me today. I can email those over, but those rates were given to me from the UHC. Folks who administer those programs, you will still work with me. There will be an assigned person that can help on those rates. But it, what it also does is it offers you a discount, an additional discount to your $38 by taking, if you took both of those additional programs with UMR, UHC, we can reduce that $38 by $2 less. So, it'd be $36.01 per month. So it would be $36.01 per month, minus the 31.75 and then the additional services in. And as Tony said, if you used Benefits in Hand and Higginbotham for the Cobra, then all of those services would be managed all in one place. Any other questions?
The number she gave you is per employee per month, and the number of employees we have around 100, we want.
In all that pays for the services of our third-party administrator, the ones that oversee this plan for us. We're self-funded, we don't provide the administrative element. That's done here as part with the fees that we pay to UMR.
The number she just quoted here, about $14 per person per month, and 131 people, that's roughly $23,600 a year that we pay then to UMR. That's their, they roll the numbers down.
Morning, Steve.
If you're ready, I can move over to the Stop Loss tab, and we can talk about your stop loss. Very, very positive news on your stop loss. You're currently insured with QVE. They're offering a 2020 renewal. If you looked, and it's option one that we're providing, which is your current stop loss program. So as Judge Lee discussed in the beginning, what this is, is protection on your claims. So if you had a claimant that exceeded $60,000 in their claims for 2020, anything above the $60,000, well, actually, anything above the $70,000 would be paid by QVE and reimbursed back to the county. What I wanted to present to you is that there are no fee increases on what we call our fixed fees. So if you look at the section where it says rate per month, and it has single and family, and it has your enrollment, these fees that are currently showing are what you're currently paying in 2019. So you will continue to pay the same rates for 2020. Your, if you'll come down to the next section, again, the title line says rate per month, but it's a composite rate. This is what we call our aggregate fee that's charged by QVE. That actually dropped from $9.55 to $6.51. And if you look below that, this is your monthly aggregate claim factors. Those rates also dropped. Trying to get to my sheet that shows what those numbers are. So your, what they call your, your aggregate claim factor numbers, so this is what you can use for determining your premiums to charge for your employees. So, yes, so the fixed fees are going to, I don't know if you can tell me about that number. Right. So what Carl was asking me about is the, what the total numbers are for this, and I can tell you that what you're currently being, what the estimated claim liability is on a single and family rate as a proposed number for estimating what your claims would cost, is currently at $740.05. And based on how well you have run this year and last year, and what you're expected to run for next year, that rate dropped to $636.93. And the family rate went from $2,045.65 to $1,770.31. Now, I do have a total figure on those expected claim liability, and that is just what we think your claims will run for 2020. And it's coming in at $1,000, $1,336,122.24. I will, what I also provided you in the folder were a couple of documents that I'd like to take a moment right now and talk about. And they're what we use to determine how your plan is running. One of those documents is the first one in the contact year on the left-hand side. It should say 1-1-2018 through 12-31-2018. And I wrote out how your plan ran in 2018. So how we do the math on this is your actual attachment point calculation is what your total maximum expected claims would run for all of 2018. And you divide that by 25% because you didn't hit your maximum, but you want to get to what the actual claims dollars were. So when you take 25% off of the bottom line of $1,945, we expected the county's plan to run at $1,556,708.99. If you come over to the monthly eligible stop loss claims, it's the second to the last column that has $979,590.79. That's actually what your plan ran at for 2018. So your plan, the county's plan, outperformed the expected cost by $577,118.20. So if you reserved, based on that expected cost of $1,500,000, you actually had more than, a little more than a half a million dollars in claim savings, which should be in your reserve. And if you, the second sheet shows you how you're looking for 2019. Did the same math on the actual attachment account. We expect the claims to come in at slightly over $1,000,000, because again, you're running, the plan is running very, very well, being managed very well. You've put in really good programs that have helped manage claims. Your members are, you know, doing really well with their claims. They're seeing in-network providers, they're using generic prescriptions, so your cost is down. As of through the end of August, claims have come in at $455,203. I trended that forward, meaning I took in eight months, divided that by the months, then multiplied what the monthly cost was by 12 to get, excuse me, what we thought your claims would total up for, for the whole 12 months of 2019. And it shows that estimated for 2019, your claims should come in at $852,675.75. Again, the plan is outperforming the expected cost by just over $170,000. And what QVE is indicating on their renewal is that they expect your claims to come in less than what you did for 2019. They're expecting the claims to come in at $1,336,122.24. And I feel that if we keep on track and put in these additional, a couple of additional programs that I recommend, that you should come in below expected as well.
Where was that $1,300,000 figure?
It's not on there. It's some math I did based off of the stop loss quote.
In 2018, what was our total stop loss payback to the county? Do you know? Do you have that figure?
I do not have that figure.
You have an idea?
I don't believe there were any hits, but I could double-check that for you while waiting...
Like, period, is it like, about 93?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Other than specific one?
Um, the...
They had a category one, or something?
Yeah, so, yes. Thank you, Steve. If you go back to the 2018 document and go to the far right, in November and December, you did have some claims received in the total of $8,700.
But yet, in 19 thus far, you have not had any? Somebody need help on the phone? Give it to Marcus. He's, give it to Marcus, he's a tech expert. Okay, well, that's good. So, of course, that doesn't predict the future, but we're going in the right direction.
Absolutely.
You know, 17, I know, was it 17 or 16? We got pretty well clobbered, 17?
I actually think it was 16, a little bit in early 17, but then it evened out.
Okay.
Those numbers pretty much follow what we're, she said we ended up $500,000 better.
In 18?
We carried over $544,000, because we get a ton of balance. And we added about $170,000, we got $838,000 right now. I don't want to claim the rest of the year. That's what we got right now. The question I've got for you is on the, on the stop loss premiums?
Yes.
Can I take the $420,929 plus $11,093 plus? Is there another number I need to add?
No, that's it. Those are the only two numbers. Those are what we call fixed costs.
So when I budget it, if we stay on the same plan, I'm going to budget basically $432,000 as premiums for stop loss?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, policy, we're paying $432,000 in premiums for that stop loss coverage.
Which really should be added to our claims to come up with a total picture of what its insurance cost us.
Correct. And it does, it shows, they're identifying different lines on here because we're paying them.
Yeah, but I just want everybody to understand, when you're looking at claims, remember, oh yeah, but unfortunately, we've got to pay that half million, almost a half million dollar in premiums for stop loss.
Plus, you have to pay your other fees, you have to pay the UMR fee, you have to pay...
UMR and Higginbotham. Okay, that looks good, Chris.
And then the last reminder I wanted to talk about was just our advanced claim review, which again, comes with no premium cost to the plan at all. It's more of a percent of savings. And that is the document that I brought out last July, or in July, that's looking, and what it's doing is it's zeroing in on surgical-type claims, so orthopedic, anesthesiology, cardiology, chiropractic-type services. And we've set the threshold to look at all claims prior to payment at $4,000. And we audit those claims. What we're looking for is potential billing errors, where they've billed for a service that should not have been performed for that type of service. So if you're having back surgery and there's a line item in the claim that doesn't fall within, for that, necessary for that back surgery, we're going to remove that charge and then pay the claim with just the charges that should be included for that type of service. If that physician has any questions on it, then they have a peer-to-peer review with a equivalent doctor for that specialty to speak to about their bill and go through the entire bill audit and answer those questions. Again, that's a program I would recommend putting in place for 1-1-20. Doesn't have any fee impact. If there are savings achieved, it's a 30% access. Otherwise, you won't see any charges for it, but it is a way to manage the claims even Any other questions for me?
Just as a reminder, give us a good layman's terms explanation for those that are here, those that are listening, the implications of a change from a self-funded plan to a fully insured plan.
Thank you. That's a great question. And especially with the way the plan, your Titus County Plan has been running for the last two years. When you're self-funded, the advantage is that when you have two years and hopefully going into a third year of really good claims, excuse me, the account or your fund balance, is that what it's called, Carl? Grows because you're not exceeding any claims, you're not costing as much money to run the plan. So as I showed in those two documents on those aggregate reports, you outperformed by over $500,000 in 2018. You're expected to outperform the claims in 2019 by $170,000 and change. So that means that Titus County's insurance plan has saved everyone money, almost, you know, $700,000 in two years. If you're fully insured, you set a monthly premium that you pay regardless if the plan is running well or not. And it's set premiums every month based on the enrollment. So if your enrollment fluctuates, same as on the UMR side, when your enrollment fluctuates, which the county's enrollment has not fluctuated very much in the last five years, six years that I have been part of this plan and been associated with the county. So you would pay a fat, a flat fee every month, being fully insured. Does that answer your question?
It answers mine, because I've got a pretty good grasp of it. Is there, there's no dumb questions here, commissioners. Anybody want her to explain anything else here? You know, this is, we don't deal with this often enough for us to be experts at it. So this is your chance to ask questions.
With insurance, almost policy, you're set, not set for...
Fully insured?
Fully insured. You, the rates are set based on experience each year. Whatever our experience was this year, next year, the fully funded insurance company will raise our rates as good. I never, you know, many times it went down. With self-funded, you know, we have that in the bank, a little bit. It's not necessarily two things away, how much, I said, I never had any, and that's why I'm, we're running under 47% this year of up and down. And that money's going into our fund.
Uh huh.
So that's in our insurance fund, I mean, self-funded.
Right. Yeah, because what you, and that's what Steve and Tony do, is make the recommendation as to how much you should fund for your claims and your premiums throughout, for the year. And what I'm saying and showing you is that you have outperformed in those expectations of the claims with the premiums added in it.
Well, now, we have had bad years, and we've spent $500,000 in the hole, not all the time, but we have had years where we've spent, so you want to keep that money in there so that you have it for those bad years.
Right.
So when you're comparing this, you need to take that into consideration. Fully funded, fine, insurance may not be the best. It's not, it's not quite the, certainly to me, I think, as far as decisions made, which was...
Well, in our self-funded plan, when we do good, we reap the benefits and we spend less dollars, which saves money in our, in our fund balance. In those years that we have unfortunate events occur and spend more than we anticipate, then we spend more, even more than we have budgeted. And that has meant, in a couple of years, having to make adjustments at year-end and pulling monies out of... pulling monies out of fund balance in order to bring our, our, our claims pot of money back to where it needs to be. So, again, when it's good, it's good. When it's not good, it costs us a lot of money as compared to a fully funded plan where you know at the start of the year exactly what it's going to cost you. What you don't know is what's it going to do next year, and the next year, and the next year. I mean, there's a certain amount of unknown with all of this. And what we, what we budget each year to charge each employee is based upon what is our expectation. And sometimes we're high and sometimes we're low, but right now, we're allocating, what the new budget, a thousand a month?
Thousand dollars a month per employee.
Thousand dollars a month per employee. Now, is that the actual cost? No, it's just how much we're transferring from, from the fund balance essentially into that insurance fund, hoping that it will adequately pay for all of the claims once all those one thousand dollar accruals are lumped together.
My, my experience, definitely, I have businesses that cost a lot of money insurance in. The ones that are fully funded is the only kind that I've ever had to deal with. And I don't know of any, I came across any year out of twenty-eight years, and my insurance went down. To go to a self-funded plan, there's a good chance our insurance is going, and it has the last couple of years. Those are the things that need to be considered when you're about changing.
Ron?
I never did have any decreases in premiums.
Mr. Capps?
May I?
You may.
Rest assured, please. All right. Okay. All right, I'll let her get back and finish up in a little bit. Good morning.
Good morning.
Already been to one commissioner's court this morning. Might as well do two, as good. Been on Franklin County on a similar subject. So, you know, the, as it, I got my consultant hat on this morning, okay? I don't have my UMR hat on or my TAC hat on, right? So, as it relates to what you've been doing for the last, I don't know, twenty years, maybe longer, you have been partially self-funded. I would say, generally speaking, over that period of time, you have saved a lot of money by being partially self-funded. Yes, you've had some years that were difficult. You've had, also had some years that you underfunded, you just weren't putting enough money in your claims account. But generally speaking, you have, the county has saved a significant amount of money by being partially self-funded. And could you do a study on that and go back? I mean, it'd be really difficult to do, but, I mean, this is not the first time that we've looked at fully insured for you compared to partially self-funded. I mean, we do that about once every, you know, three or four years, we take a look at that, and maybe not even that, you know, probably more often than that, just see if it makes sense to at least consider going back to fully insured. So, a couple of things, a lot more flexibility you have under partially self-funded than you do under fully insured. You usually have a set number of products that you can choose from, plan designs that you can choose from when you're fully insured. You know, a lot of things that we've been doing with UMR as it relates to, your plan design might not be available under a fully insured contract. Is it related to, you know, do, dealing with emergency room deductibles or what we've done on your, on preventative type coverage, those kind of things, might not be available under a fully insured product. And you'll have to understand, we're okay either way. I mean, we're, we're not making any commission on any products, okay? We don't make commission on any of the fully insured stuff, none of the, nothing, okay? All you pay us is our consulting fee. So, it really doesn't make any difference whether, you know, we have you fully insured or we have you partially self-funded, okay? We're still going to provide the same services that we've been providing under the fully insured product than we would under the partially self-funded product. But you just need to know that you're not going to be as in control of your program when you're fully insured as opposed to being under a partially self-funded program. In addition to that, you're going to be, you will be paying a set monthly premium with fully insured. You kind of, sort of do that with, with your fixed cost, well, you do do that under your fixed cost, but then your claims vary. But the plan is, and I think history has proven, that you come out better in the long run being partially self-funded. Now, we're, I mean, we're fine, we have Franklin County with TAC, okay? They're too small to be partially self-funded. But that, I mean, that's just what they have available to them. They're not big enough to be partially self-funded, okay? But the other part of that deal is, I mean, you don't, you move into fully insured, doesn't negate the services that we provide for you, okay? And that's really probably a subject for a different time, because I know today, you're kind, you're entertaining whether to stay partially self-funded or to go fully insured. And, and again, we're okay with either way. But you just need to know that, you know, all these discussions, all these meetings that we've had talking about plan design and stuff, you really, you have some input on that. You can change some of your plan designs, but that's going to be kind of up to whatever their, their normal product is or whatever plans they have. You're not going to be able to go in there and tweak the emergency room deductible or copay or those kind of things like you've been able to do under the, the partially self-funded plan. So, a fair amount of, less flexibility under the fully insured plan than you would have under the fully insured plan.
And then we've had, we had more of these in the early days when we switched away from health first, but as we were getting used to this new plan, certain situations always seemed to arise and commissioners would be asked to, okay, do you want to pay this claim even though it deviates from the plan? Or do you want to change the plan so that this doesn't happen in the future? And some of those adjustments along the way, we won't have that capability.
That's correct.
And when, when we find not flaws, but unexpected consequences in a, in a fully funded plan, we have to go, oops, we've got to abide by those. There's, this isn't a, well, let's bring it back to the commissioner's court and decide how we're going to treat it. It's, no, we're going to abide by the plan that we signed up for and we've given up those rights for those tweaks.
Yeah. So, that's a, you know, that is a disadvantage by being fully insured, but, you know, truthfully, I think that, that's a big deal, because see, when you're, when you're partially self-funded, you have a lot more control, okay? When you know, you get something that's a little out of whack and there's some abuses, like we did have some, you know, emergency room issues, you know, and we adjusted that and sure enough, the claims came down. We had drug card, if you remember, we had drug card issues and folks using especially drugs that probably shouldn't have been. There were good alternatives to that. And we were able to go in there and fix that since you were partially self-funded. So, and that was a significant number, if you'll recall. Those especially drugs were, what, nine or ten thousand dollars a pop or something like that? I can't remember. And, and fix that where, you know, it could be handled with two different drugs, same outcome as opposed, and like three hundred dollars a prescription as opposed to paying nine grand for the specially. So, those are, those are things that you have, that you'll be losing control over if you go fully insured. And you just need to be aware of that. You know, we would continue, if you decide to go fully insured, we would continue to, you know, do the same things we do. We fight for claims and try to, you know, figure out ways to make things work. But I can tell you, when you're fully insured, you, you have to abide by their, you know, whatever their, the plan you picked, okay? And you change, making a change midterm or doing some things along the way, that's just not going to be available to you, so. They're not as easily available to you.
And even though we've made quite a few changes each year, you know, we look at, where can we make adjustments to have the maximum impact? And we've done that, and I believe we have benefited from that, because we've seen a trend down.
Absolutely.
There's no guarantee, though, that this trend down is going to continue or even maintain. So, that's the, that's the.
Here's the deal, though, Brian.
We thought that every time we made a change, we were going to lock in the benefits from that and we were always going to have that money savings going on. Well, it only takes one or two or three folks to get really sick beyond your control to throw you, throw you out of whack again.
The, you know, most of those changes that we made were not to address large claims, okay? Those changes are to, over the full base of your employee deal is to control those costs, okay? You're always going to have the one-off cancer case or severe heart case or something like that, and that's why you buy your stop-loss insurance, Chris. You'd be limited to that first sixty plus the aggregating specific, you know, but anyway, you're paying insurance for that, okay? But the tweaks that we make are for your plan, for, to apply to all of your employees, you're not really addressed, those tweaks are not to address your serious cases, okay? There's ways to handle the serious cases in case management and, you know, those kind of things, which we do, and UMR does that. But what you've been doing is making incremental changes that have brought your total claims down. I mean, it might have been, you might have brought it down twenty, thirty dollars per employee per month, okay? And, and over the whole group over a period of time, that's a large savings. And so, it's not, we're not really, all those tweaks that we've been doing have not really been to address the big hits, you know, half a million dollar claim, which you're going to be on the first sixty of.
But implementing required annual physicals and biometric screening, we hope that what we do today saves us that hit five years down the road by identifying a problem and dealing with it in advance there or identifying that problem before it becomes
Right.
A real problem and keeping, keeping you out of that million dollar claim, half million dollar claim.
That's right. Get them on high blood pressure medicine rather than having a stroke, those kind of things, a heart attack. So, I mean, I, you know, and again, I'm okay either way, but literally, you have spent years working on your partially self-funded plan to tweak it, to where you've kind of gotten today. I mean, you know, you're, we haven't had any big hits, okay, the last two years, we've been, you know, so you've saved a significant amount of money in stop-loss deductibles on that. And so, we're, you're kind of reaping the benefits of all the years that you've put in the, you know, this partially self-funded plan. I think UMR's done a good job working with us and tweaking and moving and, you know, and negotiating on stop-loss rates and, and their fees and stuff. So, you know, just understand that, that flexibility and that, and the possibility of saving some money is, is going to go away when you go fully insured. Might there be once every five or six years where you, where you would pay more than what you would have paid fully insured? Yeah, probably. Maybe? So.
Generally speaking, we are on the very far end of size of self-funded plans when it comes to total number of covered participants at a hundred and forty-two. That's typically quite a bit less than what somebody would consider self-funded, right?
Yeah, I mean, I would say a hundred would be the minimum. One fifty is kind of the norm, one twenty-five, one fifty. So, I mean, you're, you're fine as far as your size goes. I mean, you have the ability to absorb a bad year or that kind of thing. But, but also, you know, again, you, you've had a commissioner's court that has really worked hard to control costs and to do smart things, you know, you, you know, you've adjusted your plan where you're not adversely impacting your employees. You've been able to do things that just made sense, that you were able to save money on and not really affect your employees that much, so in a negative way. So, and you've been implementing some things like the, you know, their wellness program that, yeah, it, it impacts your employees. If they don't go do their, what they're supposed to do, then it costs them some money. But, you know, you've just, you know, y'all have been very proactive in, you know, managing your health program for your employees. And, I mean, you, you won't be doing that much anymore if you go fully insured. So, questions? Okay, curious. You know, I'm sorry, I cut her off right in the middle of a renewal.
Actually, I didn't have any other, any other comments to go through on the renewal. You know, I guess one point is that the wellness, you all have been speaking about putting a wellness program in for years. So, you started it this year, and we hope to see the results from that starting next year and going forward with your employees that have taken the biometric screenings, they've done their CHRA, and so the next step is to engage them into, you know, continuing to take care of their health. Are there any other questions for me? I appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, that is an action item, and again, I would, I'm not going to call for a vote right now. I think that we need to listen to what Santos brings us from TAC, and then we may come back and visit the stop-loss decision. We do need to make a decision on that stop-loss if we're going to continue on. I assume we need to make that decision pretty quick.
Yes, sir. It is a firm quote, so there's no going back. They have come out with their best proposal. If you go down it, we lock it.
Okay. All right, let's move on to item number fifteen. And our guest today is Santos Trejo from, number what?
Thirteen.
Number thirteen. Santos Trejo from Texas Association of Counties comes to us from Austin to tell us about a quote that he has had prepared for us that is a fully funded plan. And this is with Texas Association of Counties pool, yeah, I think.
Yes, sir.
If there's, if there's anybody that doesn't have that, looks like Santos has got additional There's an, there's an extra if you need that back. No, that, that's a, that's a Higginbotham-generated document. All right, Santos, Mr. Fitch is very familiar with you, but this is
Yes, sir.
Some of our first times to, to meet with you, so tell us a little bit about your role and what you bring to us today and then get into the details.
Well, thank you guys for giving me time to come here and present and speak to you guys. I wanted, I've been with TAC probably since January, so pretty familiar with their products. I've got a background, about fourteen years of insurance and broker experience, was a agent, then became a broker in employee benefits, so done that for about fourteen years, risk advisor as well, so I'm pretty familiar with both sides of the fence. I've got, you can see what I've handed you, I think you guys have pretty much gone over most of that information there, but I'll just kind of go over it to over a glance and just kind of touch over it. You know, some of the stuff I heard earlier was some of the same misinformed information I had too as a broker. Great thing about TAC is with us being a not-for-profit, we're definitely member-driven, no, no, no stockholders are satisfied. TAC is, the way I like to explain TAC is pretty much like a crate union. Our, our members are counties. We've got over two hundred and forty-one counties, divide a ninety-nine percent retention ratio. We offer quite a bit in support products. I think I've heard some of the things about, one that I heard was, once you go fully funded, you're unable to make customizations to plans. With TAC, you can actually do that. I think what we presented was a pretty standard plan. We try to equal to what you guys had currently, but we do have the ability to customize. We've got different counties with different customizations. I think the other thing I heard too was, you have good years and you have bad years, and the good years are not able to, to save anything once you go fully funded. Well, with TAC, that's not the case. With TAC, if you, if you do have a good year, we provide, in return to the counties, a surplus distribution. That surplus distribution is going to be based on your loss ratios, obviously, what we projected for you guys to be in terms of losses. If you guys perform better than what we expected, we do return to the counties in a surplus distribution. Our, our administrative cost is much lower. I know on the commercial side, administrative, they tried to, usually it's about eighty-four to eighty-six cents on the dollar is what they try to pay out for claims. Whereas TAC, we pay out about ninety-four cents on the dollar. So, you can see our administrative cost is much lower, about six percent. Because of that, we're able to have stability in your rates. You probably can see with that first. Um, you probably can see with that first, uh, handout I kind of gave you where it shows the medical trend. So, you've got a medical trend between 6 and 9% annually. And then on top of that, you've got inflation of about 3%. So, if you add those, you're between what, nine and, uh, you know, 12, 13. Uh, with TAC, we've got single-digit renewals. I think, uh, Commissioner, you had mentioned something earlier about you've never experienced a, a year where your premiums decreased. Since I've been with TAC, I've got 44 counties. Of my 44, I think this last renewal, I probably had about, uh, 15 with decreases. So, I've seen a decrease as much as 6%. And I've seen a bunch of flat renewals at zero, but I've also seen increases as well. So, it just depends on the county, how much you want to participate in what you're currently doing now, I guess, in some of the preventive care. I know you guys have done a great job implementing that now, but that's something that they've been doing for quite some time. So, the other ways we help to cut costs is that we work with Blue Cross Blue Shield, who's our administrator. So, even though your, your card itself may say Blue Cross Blue Shield with that logo, they're, they're not the ones paying the claims, we are. We basically utilize them as our administrative services, so we utilize their networks, um, for, uh, negotiated rates. So, because we're part of a, a risk pool, we spread that, that risk throughout, uh, all 221 counties. And because of that, we're able to, to, to have a larger discount in our payout in claims and averages about 12% less. So, just moving from one carrier to the next, uh, let's say you were not with TAC, but if Blue Cross Blue Shield was to, to give you a rate, you would automatically without a doubt have a 10 to 12% increase in your claims payout on the back end because we garner that type of, uh, I wouldn't say weight, but we, we have the ability to, to have that much of a discount because of the large lives that we carry. So, as opposed to you guys where you've got about 140 lives, we're up to like 50, I think 56,000 is what I looked at last. And because of that, we have a bigger discount, uh, in cost for your healthcare as well as, uh, the prescription side. So, that's, you know, some of the things I heard you guys touch on, I kind of wanted to come back and let you know that that's, TAC is totally different. Um, you know, with the 14 years I did the commercial market now here, not quite a year yet, but I've, I've noticed a complete difference in the way TAC operates for counties. It's, it's, it's amazing, um, being able to see what they can do for counties, it's, it's, it's pretty amazing. Um, one of the great things about it is their actuaries are pretty, pretty concise because the actuaries that we utilize are the same actuaries that do the benefit plans for the hospitals, the school districts. They're bas, they're Texas-based. So, with the commercial market, what we tend to, tend to do is actuaries will look at it at a national level. So, they'll say in this region of Texas, we've got X amount. They would say in this region of Texas, or Texas, I'm sorry, region of US, we've got X amount. They would take that and average it and say each band has a value of X. Where our actuaries don't do that. Our actuaries have the ability to have, in particular Zip Code, the number of premature babies that would be there, number of heart attacks, they're able to zero down on that. And because they're able to do that, we get a more precise, uh, rating factor. So, when we come to you with the rate, it's pretty, pretty accurate. We can determine based on your Zip Code, population, um, number of providers in that area, what we can determine that your, 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 uh, payout would be. And because of that, that's how we stick out of a cost savings factor. And most importantly is the renewals. Like I said, with the renewals, you do have the decreases, we do give out savings. In addition to that, we give out the surplus distributions that come back in return. Um, there's quite a bit that comes with TAC. It's not simply just a commercial market where you're given a rate and then that's it. And just to that, we have all the other programs, I guess you guys were implementing as well, um, the preventive care. Shamira would be our wellness consultant who would come and she would be able to set up a program for preventive care because if you decided to do that and participate in that, she would be the one tracking that. She would give you guys the, the, uh, results and, and work whoever in the county would be designated as the individual to, to, uh, head that up. She would work with that person. I would be your employee benefits consultant. I'm constantly on the road visiting counties. If I'm not avail, obviously you call me by cell phone, but if I'm not available, Maria Castillo is your employees' benefits who handles the day-to-day stuff in the office, dealing with claims, claim questions. Uh, maybe, uh, an employee may have questions about a particular provider. Um, Maria would handle that in the office. And then obviously we have your billing specialist that would be able to handle your monthly billings, handle your reports, your 1095s and everything that comes with that, your parts, uh, which would be Affordable Care Act reporting. All that's done within TAC. Uh, and it's all built into, obviously, the cost factors that you guys have already been proposed. There's no additional cost for any of that stuff. But, um, really it's just, you know, some of the highlights from what I'm wanting to touch on, I guess, based on what you guys are, were speaking about. After I looked at your rates, I think what we did was, we did base just on what you guys had for, uh, currently. And I'm just going to kind of thumb through these on page, let's see. Well, page seven, if you look there, like I mentioned earlier, we've got 30-plus benefit plans from different, uh, counties that have already customized their plans. See on that page seven. So, there is customization. Uh, page eight, our prescription drugs are totally different. We don't go on a, um, we go based on tiers. It's not generic name brand, we go based on tiers. The way our Navitas PBM works is they go with most cost-effective as tier one. So, believe it or not, you can have name brand drugs in your tier one, uh, band because we receive a bigger rebate from that particular drug manufacturer. And they immediately apply that rebate to that drug to lower the cost. So, when you look at your tiers, it, once again, a name brand can be in a tier one because it's most cost-effective. So, they go based on cost-effectiveness. So, if you're lesser cost, you know, regardless of the brand goes in your tier one and then it works its way up to tier two and tier three. I think your deductible options were 0, 100, 250 is what we have, but I think you guys chose otherwise. We also offered a life dental as well. I think that, uh, life is through Voya and your, uh, vision is through Dearborn. Page 11 is some of the reportings that, uh, I discussed earlier, where we produced the 1094s and 95s. Those are filed through IRS forms to help whoever's going to be here as, uh, your HR person. We work with them as well. Uh, we have online enrollment for employee self-service portal for the employees. Once they go through, uh, annual enrollment, they can do that online. The Oasis system is, is, uh, a system that's kind of built for, uh, you know, whoever's handling the benefits portion here. It's, it's your customized online administrative system. It helps for your managing your eligibility and your billing. That's part of it, that's already, uh, part of that cost factor. And then let's go to, let's see if I can get your plan cost. Yeah, there it is, page 14. So, our costs, I think you're currently on a 70-30 plan. We're, 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 uh, proposing 80-20. So, we're giving more, uh, less of a cost to, to the employees. So, we were doing, we're offering an 80-20 plan. Our cost for employee only is 9, 925. I think you guys were over a thousand. As you can see, our costs, we're saving the total about 7% overall, which is about 133,000 is what the savings would be, um, changing over. Your office visits and your co-pays, I think you guys elected at 30 and 30 for specialists. Obviously, 100% preventive care cost is covered as well. Uh, I think deductibles are showing as, uh, 3,000 in that work. Emergency room is at 150. Next page is showing your dental benefits. I think you guys chose a plan max benefited at 1,500 for the year. That's pretty much it. The way we work is we basically take that and like I said, we spread that risk over all 56, 7, 56,000 lives and, uh, lessens the cost burden to you guys in those years where you do have high claims. So, if you get a couple of back-to-back high claims in one year, that could be detrimental to the county's budget, but thus we absorb that. We already project that in what we call a shock claim. So, in that shock claim, what we'll do is that particular year, we'll say, this is what we're expecting to be the highest claim in that year. We take that dollar amount and we put it in a shock claim. Once we put it in our rates, we pull that highest claim out. So, when you do suffer that claim, it's not counted against you because it's already been shocked out, it's already been predetermined. So, those are, uh, some of the positive factors, there's many more, but, I mean, I, I'd like to open it up for questions to see what you guys, questions you have, maybe I could answer rather than just continue to talk.
When, when annual adjustments are considered, are we compared among all the counties or just our own county's performance? Or a combination of?
Yes, sir, it'd be, the overall pool, let's say this, this year, I think our pool overall, uh, expectation was 2.99%. So, what that basically meant was for the pool as a whole, the renewal rate was 2.9, which is basically 2.99%.
Increased.
Increased, what we were expecting. Basically, three, for the pool overall. Then we take that expectation of 3% and we look at each county individually. So, we'll have a county that, that underperformed and did much better than we expected. So, obviously, we're not charging them a 3%. We're in the commercial market, they're going to charge you regardless. Uh, we in turn say, okay, how far, how, how better did they perform than expected? And that's where we determine, do they receive a zero renewal? Do they receive the pool renewal or do they receive a decrease? That's, that's how it's, uh, worked out. It'll be looked, uh, by county specifically.
So, if we make efforts at the county level here, we, we might outperform the rest of the pool, in which case we would derive some additional benefit over the standard pool increase.
Yes, and it would be based on, yeah, I would look at it based on the county's performance, not necessarily a pool. Because the county itself would be looked at. It's just that you, you derive the benefit of being in that pool with, with the risk of having such a low renewal. But then again, we look at the county individually, determine.
We, we, on the other hand, we might exceed that 3% if we had a bad year.
You might, you might have, but, uh, what I do know about TAC is since inception, they've not received a, no county's received a double-digit renewal, no county. And for, uh, a, a size of your group in the commercial market, when we did it, I would expect you guys, depending on your loss ratios, on the low end, maybe 12, 13% renewal. That's the low end.
Do you have, you mentioned life insurance. What kind of life insurance benefits might be available, not necessarily as part of these costs, but if we were interested in, and we are of course, interested in providing insurance for our employees. Right now, we provide $50,000. Do you have a market for that or do we need to?
Well, we, well, our partner would be Voya, but that's who we work with. Once again, you would have the benefit of being in the risk, so the cost would be, you know, less depending on loss ratios and everything else. So, our, our, I would say vendors like Blue Cross Blue Shield, I'd say they're our vendor because once again, we bear the cost, TAC. But our, our, uh, our, um, reinsurance is at 750,000. So, anything before that, obviously, TAC pays. Anything above that, then Blue Cross Blue Shield pays, then 750,000. One thing I can say, uh, that I've noticed coming over from commercial to TAC is, TAC is really great at what they do. It is what it is. County, counties tend to be a little more mature than the average commercial book of business. Anywhere between 12 to 15 years more mature. So, whenever we have Blue Cross Blue Shield that brings their book of business over and compares it to the size of what we have, that, they just tend to be 12 to 15 years younger, but yet we still outperform that. Year in and year out. I do know that, I'm impressed with TAC, that the fact that they have an executive from Blue Cross Blue Shield come over and, and tried to mimic what we do in their commercial market because they can't duplicate it yet. So, they're always interested to see what we're doing that's new, that keeps the cost down for such an older population. Um, so that's pretty impressive, um, coming from a commercial stand, standpoint. The other thing is, is they'll say, why don't you go anywhere else besides Blue Cross Blue Shield? Well, when Blue Cross Blue Shield is the biggest network available in Texas, um, and they're our administrator, they're not the insurer we are, and they give us the best, uh, cost factors on reinsurance. It's kind of hard to, need to go anywhere else. I mean, they, they perfected the, the claims process and we just ride off of that ability to do that. Do we take a look at questions that come into play where someone says, hey, I was charged this? And they call the office, I need someone to look at, look at this and figure out what's going on? Of course, we just pick up the phone and call Blue Cross Blue Shield and, and question that and we get it corrected. If, if it's, you know, not correct, but very far and few does that happen.
And I read this, did it say you have free vision?
Yeah, on the preventive side, on the health side, yes, sir, because of particular plan you guys have chosen. It's just an annual wellness checkup. So, like when you go do your, your wellness to kind of look at your vision.
The physical, yearly physical's free?
Say it again.
To go get your blood work and everything?
The preventive, preventive care, yes, sir, preventive wellness is at no cost. Everything's already built in. If you go do, and tell the provider you're going to do a physical, then obviously you're going to be charged because it's not preventive. It's, it's a physical, you got to be careful with that. Some other things that...
Wellness checkup.
Yeah, wellness checkup. Um, and at the same time, that's, it's the discretion of, of the, of the provider, you know, how, how they're going to bill that accordingly. We come into that situations where a person would go in to do, uh, their wellness and end up walking out with the bill. Well, it depends on what exactly they did during that time and how that provider coded it. Um, but yes, your wellness is part of it at, at no cost and the vision portion. Well, yes, well, the hardware's not part of it, but that's what I was saying, to prevent the portion.
Yeah, it's not for glasses and such, yeah.
Yes, not free glasses, but the...
That'd be a separate policy. And I like the flexibility. So, there is a lot of flexibility to different plans. We could even, uh, this plan's better for our employees because it's 80-20, obviously, a lower deductible, cheaper for employee and spouse, but, I mean, even if we wanted to really apples to apples, we'd go 70-30. So, we got flexibility in tough times that we could go to a different plan if we had to. I don't want to, I'd rather have a better plan when we're going in saving 7% than what we expect now. Plus, if we have a good year like we had this year, we're going to get some money back. So, that's kind of what we do now, we save if we have a good year. But if we have a really bad year, we're just out that, that check every month that we pay y'all and y'all had to eat it. Blue Cross eats it, where we were dipping into our, uh, general fund. Now, Teladoc, it has some telephone doctors we can get ahold of in this plan, or is that something we need to add?
No, no, that's part of, uh, what we have, we call it MD Live. That MD Live has a $10 copay.
Okay.
On the MD Live, we have the free nurse, nurse line that's 24/7. Um, you have that as well. Uh, that, that's free at no cost, uh, without paying a copay of any sort.
And then for paperwork that goes through our auditor's office, the IRS reporting forms, uh, I hear it's a big headache. And our auditor's office stays busy enough as it is. I, I, I personally feel that we may have had to get another part-time person or something to help with some of this IRS to keep up with our insurance. Now, when we enroll, do, does TAC send somebody down here to enroll us in this or we, we self-enroll, like you said, on the computer?
Yeah, initially for the first year, what, uh, you know, depending on how we work with the broker, the first year, we like to come in, uh, help with that enrollment to kind of get familiar.
I guess UMR would be here, I mean, Higginbotham would be here too to help. It'd be kind of a double-duty deal. Y'all would answer each other's questions, help us get enrolled if we do choose that.
Yes, sir, it'd be myself as the employee benefits consultant. Shamira would come as the wellness consultant, probably bring your, your billing manager to kind of talk to payroll, to kind of give them an idea how that's going to go. And then we'd bring in our, uh, employee benefit specialist, which would be Maria, to kind of let people know that, hey, I'm here to, for a phone call, just pick up the phone and call. Um, yeah, that's, uh, we would do the enrollment, uh, for that first year. We also have that self-service portal where we can, you know, direct people to say, here's kind of how you can enroll, the lesson, maybe the burden on so much manpower. Depending too, whether you guys have the ability to have a computer set up or what have you not, in order to do that self-service here for those who may not have a computer at home. But, um, yeah, we, we pretty much come in for that first year and do it. But, uh, you know, with us being self-funded, I think I said, we're on a 80-20, where you're currently on a 70-30. And we're saving you about 133,000.
And it is kind of a wholesale insurance with a pool that big, that it helps. The insurance itself is kind of at a wholesale rate, that pool of TAC counties, all of Texas counties.
So, I'm guessing you, you would, based on what the rate... So, I'm guessing you, you would, based on what the rates are showing here, you would have maybe half of what employees would pay, I'm assuming?
Yeah, it's about half.
Because you're paying, employee only rate's 925, so you figured 925 an employee and family, would, the employee would be responsible for about 300 a month, which is about half of what being charged now.
Another point I wanted to make is, our county employees in general, we tend to stay here a long time.
Yep.
And we have some old, older age group of folks, and I feel like we're going to take some hits on some years, just because of our age brackets of our employees. So, that just takes a lot of liability out of it for the county, going with TAC, so.
Yeah.
Just a point.
Yeah.
You, you said that you were saving us about, I think I heard you say like 300,000.
No, about 133.
Oh, 130, where did that figure come from?
About seven percent, saving about seven percent.
Explain that math, I think I know what you mean, but tell me where you're, how you're calculating that, over what we're currently accruing per employee, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Or compared to our actual claims?
No, it's going to be where underwriting went, based on what you're paying out, paying out in claims and your cost. Since you guys are self-insured, you've got to have a projected cost each year annually for what benefits costs are going to be.
Okay.
So, if we match that based on what we're projecting, that's where your savings are coming in.
So, and you're comparing that to, what, 2018 or, or current data, or what?
Yeah, it would be your current data, you guys submit it for your, for your indication.
So, you're saying that you're saving us 130,000 under what we're currently paying for claims, stop loss?
Everything.
And management?
Everything.
Not just savings over that $1,000 a month that we've, that we've been accruing?
And we're at an 80/20.
That $1,000 a month pays all that that you just talked about.
Yeah.
That plus what we collect with employees. We, we collect-
Yeah, but if we're coming, if, if we're having a better year than that $1,000, in other words, we're, we're over accruing this year because we're running, we're running in the black, but again, in other years, that thousand may not be adequate, but what you're saying is you're, you're, these fixed premiums that you're proposing are actually below our, our actual claims?
We're, we're at an 80/20, you guys are at 70/30.
No, I, I'm seeing that, I, I, okay. I think I figured, going on the trend about a month ago, maybe six weeks ago, we're going to be at $173,000, 1.73 million dollars this year for insurance, us being self-funded, that's this year for 2019, which isn't over with yet, be over with this week. And with this insurance, it was going to be 1.73 million or something, it was several hundred thousand dollars less year versus, and we're having a good year this year. Well, and Steve and Tony and Chris, help me here, we're expecting, what you presented, we're, we're expecting claims for 2019 to be 852,600.
Correct.
We add to that our, let's just take our current year stop loss insurance was what, 4, 450?
460. Our cap's insurance fees, 24,000, our UMR fees, 46,000.
What else is there? That's about it?
We've got the other kinds of insurance, but I mean, I don't think-
Those are the four components?
Bigs. Yeah, but I don't know if she wants to put, I don't know if you want those in this fix. We got 12,000 in transplant premiums, I guess you'd have to put that in there, transplant premiums, 12,000.
But I did mention that you get the benefits too when you do well, right? We give you a surplus distribution check, I mentioned that on the good years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but going back to what my question was.
Sure.
Just to clarify, if I add my 2019 expected claims, granted, that's not an absolute known figure, but we're expecting 852,600, we've paid 460,000 in stop loss insurance premiums, we've paid $24,000 to Higginbotham for consulting, we're paying 46,000 to UMR for third-party cost, that's 1,382.
And 12,000 in transplant premiums.
1,382,600, and if we add 12,000 in transplant.
Premiums.
That's, that's 1.394, so.
Right.
This, this proposed premium for the next year is actually in excess of that.
Is that last year's premium, or is that 2019?
It's 2018.
Well, I just, I just wanted you guys to be sure that, that your proposed cost for 2020 of 1,565, that includes the cost of the employees, and, I mean, excuse me, the cost of the dependent coverage, or is that not in that figure?
I've got, you've got to take consideration part of last year if you're doing your benefits because we've got to look at your rolling 12 months. So, when you guys submitted all your information in order to do your indication, I'm, I'm assuming you guys gave 2018, 2017, 2018, then what, some of 2018 to 2019?
I'm not, I'm not sure, but I'm not even-
Yeah, I mean, that's, you'd have to, we could, we'd have to-
Well, let me break this down question by question, I'm not here challenging you.
Oh, no, no, no.
I just want to unders, make sure I'm understanding, but if we look, and, and I don't even know if you have this sheet here.
No, I, I, that's not something I would-
But if we took the-
Thank you.
And Tony, since you all prepared this, looking at this sheet, right in the middle at the very bottom, 1,565.
And actually, that's what I was trying to tell you, there were some errors in the way that the numbers were flipped, and so we, that's what Sharon did, so actually, it's one of them.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, right. Yeah, she's pretty good. But it's like, because we had the, the levels of premium, employee, employee spouse, employee children, we had done the spreadsheet last week, those numbers are-
Okay, what is the revised figure instead of 1,565?
Why don't you just have me, it's the same as what I've got here. 26.
No.
And that?
See, I don't know, yeah, that's, that's, see, and basically using those numbers, just-
So, we charge both for employees' spouse and we didn't-
See, it was flipped.
Okay.
See what I'm saying, and these are still, Jessica's homesick, so this should be 212 and 175, okay? But this was flipped, because we had employee, child, employee spouse.
Okay.
But if you just add up the current numbers, 9612, it comes out to this per month and this per year. Just these numbers.
I gave you.
No, no.
I don't think that's me either.
I know, that's what I told her, I said, we revised this, like, that's what we were waiting on before court started.
Okay, I thought the only thing that changed was that very first column between family and employee plus children.
No, and in fact, that's the thing that-
Hey.
I, I don't, I'd have to go back and pull the-
Thought that sounded-
And again, I think they change periodically, so we're just trying to-
So, that affected not only this, but it affected these, affected this number here.
Don't worry about it, it's all good, huh?
Okay. Entropy this while I've got you up here, is this the net?
See, my, my life's not that complicated, we can just fit it out like that, we don't know exactly, yours change is monthly and it's, it's difficult to track.
It's black and white.
Yeah, yeah, I, I got, I got some more in black and white.
Does the county pay out, or do we need to do staff by what the employees are giving to us?
We don't know what that's supposed to be.
We just, we just-
Oh, no, 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 I'm good, I'm good, I'm, I'm made regardless, I'm going to be fine, I'm good. Yeah, yeah, no, no, yeah, you guys are Franklin County too, that's why I said it would be, depending on how they want to work out with you guys.
Let's give the updated two at least, let's give it at least to these guys up here.
You got another one of these updated?
I'm going to get you guys revised numbers on that chart, there's fifty, there's a couple. So, what were they comparing when we sent in all of our censuses and everything to say that we're saving seven percent lower?
Yeah, we're going, based on what you guys provided to me, I, I can't attest to that document because that's something that maybe was created, I don't know who created it, so I, I had nothing to do with that document, so I can't, I can't speak on that. I can only speak on what was submitted to us, to underwriting in order to conform your indication, and based on those numbers and figures and loss ratios is what we determined to be the savings. But as far as that document, I don't really know, I can't speak on that document.
Well, what I, what I think is that the proposed new premium that you've set for us, less the amount, in other words, whatever the county writes checks to you for, less what we collect from our employees for dependent coverage for the year 2020, I don't think is going to be less than what the net was to the county in 2018. It may be le, it will be less though than what we have been accruing per employee, in other words, we've been accruing $1,000 a month for employees, and we've, and our actual claims are slightly less than that. Does that make sense?
Where the difference is, Santos, he didn't, wasn't aware that UMR was going to have the truce, so he was looking at almost like a black, store, so we have the truce on the renewal, which is why, he's probably said it's less than what we were, you know, expected.
Good point, good point.
But the renewal is the truce.
Good point, but e, either way, I don't think the difference is enough for me to base my decision on, oh, well, they're, you know, you're not really saving us this much, it might be closer to even, that's not going to affect my decision, I just kind of wanted to know what we were going to expect. The fact that we're having a good year here, again, we may not be able to repeat that each year, and it may boomerang back next year or the next, and we may be paying substantially more than we paid this year, that's that unknown that we have with self-funded insurance.
Would, is, is that projected half, half of the, what I looked at, half of the costs or savings for employees on the employee and family, think it was, it saved about 50%? Is that based on renewal numbers?
Well, that, that was my next point, and what you're making, this is the good news our employees want to hear, is what is it going to cost them to cover their dependents? And the county does set those rates, what the count, what the employees must pay to us to cover their dependents, their wives, their kids, both, and regardless of how well we do in claims for those dependents, we're charging them a fixed rate, which is the same that you would do. But, what our employees should take note of is you're looking at those figures, an employee plus a spouse, previously on a paycheck by paycheck basis was, we were taking 175 dollars out.
No, I think that's flipped, you got to flip it, it's two-
Am I still looking at the old one?
No, they just didn't fix, they just didn't fix that part. It's two, it's 21250 for the employee and spouse, it's 175.
21250 is, should be in that second line.
Right.
Okay.
And 175 should be in the third.
All right, well, employees who are here and curious, right now, if you cover your spouse, it costs you 212 dollars and 50 cents per paycheck. TAC insurance, that figure would be 106 dollars. So, there's 106 dollars in per paycheck savings, or 200 dollars.
One thing I'd like to point out, if I could, with that type of savings, and this is just me kind of projecting.
Can you tell me the correct figures, please?
We got it. Check out all the UMRs.
So, I said it, I said it right, if you cover your spouse, it's currently costing you 212 dollars and 50 cents, if we change, it'd be 106 dollars. If you're covering your children only, it's costing you 175 dollars per paycheck, it would cost you 87 dollars and 50 cents per paycheck with TAC. If you're covering your entire family, 300 dollars per paycheck now, that would go to 150 dollars per paycheck.
It's a no-brainer.
Well, it's not a no-brainer, no.
No.
Not for me, it's not, yeah.
That's right, so we could change our-
That, that's true, but we know that we're under, we're undercharging for our independent coverage, we've known that for a long time.
So, would you, would you make that change in your current situation with your renewal? If you remained with UMR, would you then decide to lower that cost for the county contributing to the employees?
We, I've been working hard, I think all these guys have been working hard to increase that and to keep up with the time, so no, we wouldn't reduce that.
So, then, we, we do pretty good by being able to provide more coverage at a lesser cost, and what I think you would-
Yes, yeah.
And I think what you would see was, would be, you would also have a higher increase in enrollment, because of that, you'd bring in more contribution for enrollment, so then you would, no, it's not.
We're going to charge them whatever you charge us.
Yeah, no, I'm just going based on my experience in the county, whenever an employee has a lesser cost in health coverage, there's more enrollment, because there's more enrollment-
He does have kids, but he's a lot-
And kids don't tend to cost as much because they're not as sick.
Well, you're right, you may, you may end up with employees making the decision to provide some dependent coverage that they previously couldn't afford with these lower rates.
And, and that in turn, if the county does grade on the expectations, once again, your surplus is returned to you, it's not like we would keep that, that difference between the two. So, you would have that surplus distribution, that's the other thing I was wanting to circle back to. So, if you had more contributions coming in, less of a payout on the, on the claim side, and obviously, it's not like we would keep that, we would return that back to you in surplus distribution.
That would be my question to y'all, is those numbers compared to both Blue Earth and every other business, anywhere around there, that's insurance? Hold on. Way, way lower than that, you couldn't, you couldn't be able to continue to do that?
We have 150 million dollars in surplus, as far as in our, in our surplus side to cover for any losses. We have the first 750,000 that's paid by TAC, but anything above that in large claims paid by Blue Cross Blue Shield.
That means I'm able to, I'm able to cover 70, 212 dollars.
But see, you got to remember the point that I just made earlier.
Her paycheck.
That's 212 a month, basically.
The point I made earlier was, the point I made earlier was that we're a nonprofit, we don't answer to shareholders, like on the commercial side, if we're paying out, exactly, they have to make money, so we're, you know, if they're not looking to, or I wouldn't say not looking to, ideally not want to pay above 84 cents on the dollar, then that, that's their, that's their money, but we're paying at 94 cents on the dollar, so we're operating at 6%. So, we don't have to, to make, you know, obviously, we cover administrative costs, but we don't have to, that's it, you're all part of the shared, shared risk factor.
You said it was costing you 212 a month, that's, that's for, that's every paycheck, is it not?
Well, it says here, it's 106 dollars every check.
It's 212 for you on the new one. Each is adding-
Well, I haven't seen, I'm just, I'm just doing 106 dollars times two, it's 212 dollars a month.
Okay, I thought you were referring to the- Okay, I thought you were referring to the current, which also happens to be 212.
Well, that's 212.
That, that's what I wanted to clarify, you were saying it's gonna cost you to cover Stephanie $212, yes, under the new plan, but it's also what you're currently having to pay per paycheck.
Right.
So it's cutting it in half.
Yes. I just don't know if anybody's insurance is $212 a month, do you? I mean, that's great for me, that's, that's fine, that's, I just don't know how you can house her, know how to be that far.
Steve.
I'm just gonna say this, I mean, you may see fully insurance, you know, track it pretty close, somebody will think either one of those members were way out, like they were high on their dependent cost, you know, what we're charging.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Steve's point is if you look at that first, that third column in purple, these are some, uh, United Healthcare proposals for fully funded insurance as well that you should look at.
But would, our rates, or would say rates, our cost factors don't adjust because we gotta have a competitor. Whereas in the commercial market, when I was in the commercial market, it's called buying business. So if I know you're coming to me for a competitive bid, I can run and take that business through another carrier and ask that carrier to buy your business for this year and give you the rate that entertains you and makes you happy, but next year I come back and I'm gonna clobber you because I need to collect everything that I didn't make the first year.
And you're saying you're not gonna do that.
I'm saying we don't do that, we're, our rates remain static and remain constant regardless, regardless of whether we have a competitor that's in bid. So if you've got a lower rate now because you've got a competitor, then I'm, I'm projecting out for the next three to four years and see what that's gonna be like. With tac, we're, we remain constant, we remain the same. And that's the reason why we have 221 counties of the 240 that's there, is because we, you know, we're, we're not there to buy business.
What that tells me, Brian, is maybe we were walking the wrong.
Pull that mic up to you, so folks at home can, can hear you.
For the last several years, we worked on the assumptions that we needed to raise those premiums to those employees, and this is telling us that, I guess we really didn't.
If, if yourself.
But our, but our actual claims proved that statement wrong. We were actually paying more for our dependents than we were, than we were charging. Now, how can they do it here? I, I don't know. Yeah, that's good.
It's because we're in the risk pool, that's what you, I think, the, hey, I think that's where you guys are maybe not having to connect, you're, you're, you're taking everything and you're justifying on, based on 140 employees and what you're doing here.
Well, I just say, but like, when I compare us to what the, uh, some of the local businesses, the bank, the pre-purts, big tax, those different places, their insurance is not $200.
Because they've gotta pay out.
School district.
But they also want to be $135 for employee only, so tac is, is.
Supplementing.
$135 employee only is what you're willing to pay.
Yeah, we've got a high employee-only coverage, low dependent, and in another employer, it might do this.
No, we just went based on what you guys provided us. I have counties that, that pay their employees, uh, I've looked at some of the costs and I'm astounded, they're paying $1,238 a month for their employees' insurance is, is because their, their losses produce that. Um, and then I've got counties that only pay, uh, last month's salt paid $541 for that employee-only coverage because their rates produce that. So it's, you know, it's gonna go based on your claims, but once again, we're not a commercial market, so we don't have stockholders and, and a company to satisfy, and we don't have to have that type of, of profit, and there's nothing wrong with making a profit, we're just going based on what you guys have now.
So what they do is they model your proposal based upon, basically, level of it after the current rate structure.
I'm just talking about like, how we come up with our low-cost factors is gonna be based on, once again, yeah, your loss ratios and what you have, our payout's just different. We're, we're paying out, you know, 94 cents on the dollar to claims versus only wanting to pay out 82 or 84 cents on a claim, that's, it's a big difference.
Yeah, what you're saying is they may have done some adjustments in there too.
Well, not only is it, we had told tac that we were paying $600 for employee only. He would have faced those, those dependent rates would have been a little bit more.
No, no, that's what I keep, we're, we're not here to mimic anyone, we're not here to, to, to buy anyone's business. We go based on your loss ratios. We take the loss ratios of what your current trend is.
The 925, she uses there, that's not affecting what you're charging for the spouse, family.
No, we, I, I just, I guess I'm trying to, give me the, I don't really know that sheet, so what, what's the question you're asking me? Cause what I, what I, what I'm assuming is that you're saying.
That's just the full rates, that's on the proposal. All we did is just take out the 925 to get the, get the dependent rates per paycheck. So we did, we just subtracted this amount from those amounts.
Yeah, yeah, I know that.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, is if the county was paying $600, then we would have reduced, so those dependent rates might, these rates would have been the same, but that per paycheck amount would have been different based upon what they're allocating for employee only.
Notes, whatever you guys want, yeah, well, you wanna allocate, we're just going based on the rates, on, based on loss ratios, I don't know what you guys wanna allocate for employee, that has nothing to do with us, yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm lost, I'm trying to figure out what we're talking.
Was this all, this stuff here, was it available to him to get an actual quote?
Yeah.
Yeah, when we gave him, they gave, they wanted a whole lot of loss ratios for the past three years, I think. We gave them everything that they asked for, and that's what the education was based on.
Here's what they're saying, if y'all look on this sheet here, in the column where it says monthly premiums, and you got employee only at 925.
Yeah.
That, because that number is 925 instead of 625, it allows you to have lower cost to the employees down at the bottom.
But that's not what Santos is saying.
My name's Santos, but that's not what I'm saying, I, I'm saying that, that has, that has nothing to do with me, that's, I'm just, I just gave you guys the rate based on your loss ratios that were, yeah, yeah, and if, and if you guys determine that each individual wants to have X amount allocated, that has nothing to do with tac, we'll just give you the rates based on loss ratios.
I believe, I believe.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Commissioners, question, this is your time to ask questions from all these experts you've got here on direction to help you make this decision. Alternatively, you can throw out a motion, you can table this, you can modify this, whatever you wanna do. I don't think I have any other questions for you, I appreciate it. Anybody in the audience have a question? I blew it. Yes, Ryan, if you'll come up to the mic.
I'm just trying to clarify, I, so he's saying it's the better rates because you have so many counties in Texas that you can use all those members of employees that you're covering, which in turn makes the rate lower, correct? Okay, that's all, that's all I, so AP, I'm here.
And, and he says their administrative costs are lower.
Sure. It's like a buying group in furniture store, has furniture, doesn't get by big time, so with, they need to be buying group in there nationwide, we get better deals through that, so basically, that's what he's saying.
Good analogy, good analogy, yeah.
That's all I, thanks for that.
Steve, Sheriff, Ken, ladies, Marcus.
Sheriff, did you get all your questions answered about the 1095s and enrollments and all that?
I mean, speaking from an employee standpoint, I mean, based on this, I mean, employees could be saying, I pay for a family right now paying $600 something dollars a month, 600 plus, you know, my bill. And that's, that's a big, that's, that's a big chunk of change.
Well, that, that's the easiest part of our decision, is looking at that. Yeah, you're right, it's substantial, substantial for somebody in your position.
Question I have, is the county's willing, is the willing to pay the 925 about a month for employees, or is that more than you pay a month of the previous plan, or?
Well, that, that's another thing we've gotta factor in, I think, I think we've got a willingness, cause right now, we're accruing $1,000 per employee. That's just what we're putting into the pot. Fortunately, this year, our claims are running a little less than that, and, and we're probably overaccruing at $1,000, but again, a couple of years ago, we were having to move that bar up each year, we used to be at 750 not too long ago.
Sheriff?
This is a statement that I've heard in the direction board, that would tac will save 7% based on what we're paying right now, or is that?
That is prior to the UMR, to 11% less. So, I mean, you know, one thing, one thing, right, I, I don't wanna keep following this out, if you wanna table and let us make sure all the members are correct, we'll be happy to work with Santos and the UMR, make sure all the members are correct, everybody's on the right category.
We're not comparing apples to apples though, Steve, if you go up to 80/20, if you go down to a $1,000 deductible, then we'd know what your rate is, it's gonna be a whole lot, probably a lot higher.
Yeah.
So we're not apples to apples here, period.
Pretty much even, this one's, they revised it 1689, the numbers I'd give, if I, if I just take $1,000 a month that we're putting in, is 1692. 141 people, $1,000 a month, 1692.
Marcus, to answer your question, based upon the information that we gave to him, which is all he had to work with, he's saying, yes, yes, there will be a, a savings.
I mean, it's a win-win for the county and the employees, I mean, that's what they said, the 80/20 plan.
Yes, yes, it is.
Another thing, this $5,000 wellness discount we get, for doing that wellness checkup every year, y'all come up here and check on us and all that, so we, that's mandatory, or we don't get that discount with y'all?
It's not mandatory, is what we're providing.
We decided to do it so we would get that extra discount, but with tac, we don't have to do that. We can, we can do whatever wellness we want.
We decided to do it to hopefully improve the overall health of our employees for years to come.
But if you continue that, with tac, you also receive a, a.
They give you discounts too for it?
Yeah, you will receive a, a dollar amount each, each year in back in the check format in addition to the surplus distribution.
You're, well, you're precious at all, it's, it's worth.
Okay, so Catapult is who Blue Cross Blue Shield uses to on-site biometric screens, and honestly, I've had groups of Blue Cross that brought Catapult in, it's, it's exactly like what y'all did with the biometric screening. So if you're gonna continue with that, is, and, and there's, it would be, somebody comes on site, they set up, you run through, they take the blood draw, and then you get the results of that, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And Shamira would handle that, and if you continue that program, you would have a, a check and a distribution as well for several counties.
I assume you're pretty familiar with the plan that you're proposing here. Is there anything that after we vote, tac in and read the fine print, our employees are gonna go ballistic because, well, you didn't tell me this? I mean, is there anything large that is a change over what we've got that we need to factor into this decision?
Ours is an 80/20, yours is 730. Uh, I think all the.
Now, that's a positive.
All the co-pays are listed on your plan, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield will have a large network, so you may have some increased providers, which you may not have now.
No, I only wanna know the negatives, positives are okay.
Is there anything that we're covering now that's not gonna be covered on the new plan, any procedure?
What's it tell you?
$10.
$10.
Ambulance, ambulance, you pay as you run out, that's about, that's the one there. What do you pay on the back end for that? What does the plan charge for that?
What's the plan charge, what is 45?
But that's all, but that's all.
The employees are gonna take some consideration, but could they do a zero co-pay in UMR?
No, right now, it's, it's, it's the same across for everybody.
Okay.
Um, so an ambulance $10 increase, I guess that if you're paying, there's a $10. Can't really think of anything else, I mean, it's, it's, we have 221 counties.
Just, just a only emergency room, if you remember, we, we tweaked it a little bit, changed it up, right down to your $200 co-pay if it's a true emergency. If it's a non-true emergency, it's deductible co-insurance, and, and Santos, you correct me if I'm mistaken, under the tac, it would be, and, and under the, uh, UMR, I quote too, it's the co-pay plus the deductible. That's, if it's a true emergency, you get 200 under, it was up on the plan, under the tac, it would be the deductible plus 100 in co-pay, so it'd be 1500, I mean, I'm sorry, 11.
And the co-insurance is 730.
That's correct, yeah. Yeah.
So how much is the emergency room visit under tac, Santos?
150, 150 on emergency room visits.
Well, that is on, on y'all's too, isn't it? You rack up a bill, you don't have to pay for it, you just got your 200 and go home.
200, for a true emergency, if it's a, if it went there, then follow the true emergency, which is something y'all decided, uh, it would be the deductible and co-insure. So for a true emergency, we're 200, and I, y'all can live that, I don't know, maybe, maybe we might have those.
We can customize anything, it's just, we're, we're going based on what we were provided.
There was a recent current plan, the closest, the closest tac plan that would be the current.
Ms. Trios, I have a question, if you have an employee that has to have an ambulance ride, do y'all, Blue Cross, Blue Shield pay for that, or we have to get a different?
No, we had it.
Huh?
I don't have that particular dollar amount, and I don't have.
Do they pay any of that?
But it should be in the proposal.
Because, you know, I know where we're at now, it doesn't pay, we gotta get a separate insurance company to get, yes, it is, cause that, yes.
That's not exactly right.
Well, somebody needs to pay my bill then.
It picked up the, the difference.
Somebody better pay about $1,200.
So your plan covers ambulance now, okay?
And that's actually what's.
Well, I'm just saying, they didn't, they didn't, wasn't gonna pay a dime on it. They didn't pay a dime on my, when I went to the hospital emergency.
They don't pay anything?
They, it was not, they did, they said they didn't pay it because it was, they was a different, the ambulance was, went and worked for somebody else that's sitting in the hospital. And I, and they, and I've got, they said that we tried to get it, and they turned me over collection because I had to pay $1,250 for that ambulance ride.
Okay, did you call her off?
I've called, I've called everybody, you know, I've.
But what that is talking about is, I thought you were talking about the loss of plan.
No, I said that, no, that's, that's what we have to do now, we should get an extra plan to get, go to the hospital, go to the ambulance ride.
Right, so does this plan cover the ambulance ride, or will it not?
Of it's covered after the plan year deductible.
80%?
After the plan year deductible.
So only 80% of it's gonna be covered then?
Well, that's better than, than $1,250.
Man air and helicopter, so it covers 80%.
Well, you know, they, they turned me over collection, said that, that's my bill, that wasn't no, the insurance bill, and I fought with them for, they turned me over collections, and I'm tired of messing with it, and that's my opinion of it, you know, it's gotta work.
Surely that ambulance ride was more than $1,200, but.
It's 1,200.
1,200, I mean, 1,250, that wasn't just your portion?
That was the, it was, no, that was, uh, that, they said it's $1,250, or whatever, but like I said, I done paid all the, dealing with my deductible and all that, but they said there was a different, uh, work for, uh, the ambulance service was different from the hospital, so it's like it's out, out of network bill, I don't know what it was, but I fought with them for.
Which your ambulance benefit is paid at the same benefit level as the in-network benefit level, so it would have had the same co-insurance and same deductible. So it could have been your 20% or, uh, co-insurance amount after your.
Paying two, two deductibles, that's, you know, even though you do pay two deductibles, that's not right.
You said you'd already managed it, huh?
Then it would have, could have been his co-insurance.
Co-pay, yeah.
I could look it up and find out.
Let's do follow-up on that.
Well, I like about it, it's well within our budget, that we're budgeting.
What I like about it is well within our budget, that we're budgeting for insurance, whether we put it back in our savings account or whatever at the end of the year. We also got about $800,000 in a fund right now for our current insurance plan, that probably gonna spend probably this month, next month, slow payout. We may have about $500,000 left in that money that's gonna be sitting there, probably put that back in general fund. I mean, with Tac insurance, I don't see why we'd have to have an emergency fund for something that we could have a benefit for somebody, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so, all right, so here's another thing you gotta, gotta consider, when you cancel the self-funded plan, you're gonna have runout claims that are gonna happen from January 1, your contract ends January 1, so you're still gonna have some claims that you're gonna pay the next year.
Yeah.
You gotta keep it up.
You wanna make sure everything's all paid, and there's a.
We talked about that, keep it up till June.
Keeping, keeping, Higginbotham, probably six months, maybe to help with some of those claims. Oh, that fund, yeah, I, I say leave that fund till we fully know we're not gonna be out of it.
I would say by June or July, you should have.
Yeah, I would, and I think so, but you also have, you'll have some administration fees that should be paid from January 1, three months. You pay three months upfront for a 20-month runout, so there'll be, you know, it's not gonna be that much money, but you're paying administrative costs, and then handling claims and property payments, so, if that's what you decided, if you decided to pull this through, you just gotta, we gotta finish out the, the self-funded.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that would go with Tac insurance, starting January 1. All right, you have a motion from Commissioner Fish. I have a quick question. I assume you're able to put this into effect January 1 with the time left this year.
Yes, sir.
Second, second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favors, any discussion, any discussion? Commissioner Riddle, Commissioner Parker?
I'm not, I'm, I'm not ready to vote on it. I don't know enough about the differences, and I understand some of the differences, but I, but I'm not ready to do that. I'm ready to table it and try to learn more about it.
Okay, Commissioner Parker, any comments, questions before we vote?
Oh, thanks, sir.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor of selecting Tac and making a change effective January 1, 2020 to a fully insured plan through Blue Cross, administered by Tac, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed?
Opposed.
I'm opposed because I'm just not quite ready to make a decision either. Gosh, this is a big change, I just, and I've learned a lot, but I wanted to talk to, talk a little bit more. Nonetheless, that's the vote.
Three to two.
Three to two. Okay, well, big change, we hope that this is nothing but positive to our employees this next year, as well as years in the future. We will continue with the current situation, obviously, through the end of the year, and manage claims on past that to make sure that they're all taken care of. We've got consulting services provided by Higginbotham that, at this time, we're not making any change in that. If we come back and wanna review that in the future, we'll do that at another time. Chris, I don't know what to tell you other than we thank you for your efforts, we sure enjoyed your assistance so far. I know this is a disappointment. I hope we're making the right decision, everything seems to be fairly clear today. That's all I have to say. Anyone else? All right, it's 12:10, and we've covered our closing remarks, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite to adjourn. Second, second by Commissioner Fish. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.